I gotta start this thing off with something. Good evening, I'm Bruce Bassett, your new mayor. Didn't think about words to start with. Let's just begin with the simple stuff. Ally, could you call a roll, please? Oh, Tammy.
Councilmember Jane Baum.
Here.
Councilmember Debbie Bertland.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady. Councilmember Jim Pearman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Thank you. Let's see, we're gonna do a couple of things first to get started. First, unfortunately, as many of you know, last week, or at the last meeting, there was no video, and Ally's gonna give us a bit of a report on what transpired on that. So Ally?
Thank you. For the record, Ally speaks city clerk. The city contracts with a company to provide the services that enables the video of this meeting to be broadcast over the cable TV network, or over our cable TV station. It's a set of equipment that's very complicated, which is why we contract the service out. The person that was supposed to come to our meeting to do the video broadcasting did not show up. That's out of our control, although it is our responsibility. So, we offer a very sincere apology to those of you who were sworn in at that meeting, and to the public, as we have set an expectation that the video will be broadcast. That person is no longer going to be working for the city, or working for that vendor as part of our city, and we've taken some steps to ensure that it's being broadcast, which I know it is tonight. So, again, we apologize, and we ask you to bear with us as we're trying to get this all squared away.
Thanks a lot, Ally. And we all know that the weather outside is not frightful yet, but it's supposed to be, and I think Rich is gonna give us a little bit of a status report on that.
Thank you. This is one of those storms that's coming up where we all literally can see it coming. We've got a lot of weather data coming into us from many sources, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to kinda tell you where we are in terms of preparation. The weather service that we subscribe to for very localized predictions, midday today was predicting on the low end, three, four, or five inches of snow, starting late tonight, something around 3:00, and continuing on into tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. On the low end, three, four, or five inches, on the high end, up to a foot. I think that that is gonna vary geographically around the Puget Sound region, so there's really no way of knowing exactly what's gonna happen here on the island. Of course, we're gonna try and prepare for the worst, and hope for the best. I'm gonna give you a little bit of a rundown of the kinds of preparations that we have put in place. In our maintenance department, mostly in these snowstorms, this is a... where the city puts most of its energies is in road maintenance. We have four plows, all with sanding and plowing capability, blades, and then the sand distribution. We have treated sand and de-icer that's available to put out before the snow starts, and as it's going, it's coming down. We have decided to go ahead and hold over four members of the crew, literally tonight. They're here, and they'll be here all night long, so that when the snow starts, that they can get out on it immediately. And then we go into a 12-hour shift rotation. So, if this becomes a 24, 48, 72-hour event, hopefully not, we'll be resting people for 12, and bringing them back for 12. We constantly are working with the police department and the on-duty watch commander for conditions of roads, as they see them out on the streets, and then we dispatch our guys out to the worst spots. In terms of the police department, we are planning to set up our emergency operations center in here in the chambers, at 8:00 tomorrow morning. At least get all the telephones and computers set up. We will decide then whether or not we actually want to activate the center and staff it. It's all dependent upon what the snow experience is overnight. We will have full staff in the police department throughout the evening shift, night shift, and then tomorrow morning. I think we've got most of one of the shifts here tonight, and they're probably happy that they're in here, rather than driving around for... In the... With respect to power, Puget Sound Energy has line crews and tree crews already staged here on the island, in case we get enough snow that we start to see some power outages. That happens in heavy snow. In the lighter ones, not so much, but in case there are power outages, PSE is ready. Allied Waste is now on their inclement weather policy. If you remember that, we debated it a year ago in their new contract. That means that garbage service will be suspended, and has been for the last two days. Customers are able to double up on their garbage in the next week at no additional cost, and then recycling and yard waste pickups will happen on their normal cycle two weeks later, and of course, there is no cost for that. Lastly, I spoke with the superintendent of the school district. They are going to assess where they're at at 8:30 tonight, in terms of making any sort of school closure decisions. The first decision, if they were to make any sort of closure decision, would be for a two-hours late delay, which gives them time first thing tomorrow morning to make a determination if they wanna go to full closure. So, it should be, if there's gonna be a two-hour delay, it will be available on television, on the media, and through their own email blasts for the 10:00 news this evening. So, I think that's where we're at, and if the city staff's ready, we're... People say they're gonna try and get in, and it won't be just me with a shovel.
Mr. City Mayor, I think we have increased capability than, with the snow removal equipment than last year?
Actually, we had... I think we're probably more organized and able to get more staff in them consistently, but it's the same amount of equipment as we've had for the last three years.
I thought we picked up an extra blade and a de-icer?
I... We have, I think, a smaller blade that's not on one of the big trucks, because we've always had those, but I think we do have the ability to hang another smaller blade on a pickup truck.
Right. Thanks, Rich. So, we go now to our first piece of business, and it's a piece of special business. Sort of a sad moment, but Mr. Pearman is our item of special business this evening, so with his last night here. I have a very lengthy proclamation to read, so sit back, relax. He's done an awful lot of stuff, and it deserves to be mentioned, and so I am going to mention it. Resolution of acknowledgment and commendation for Jim Pearman's service to the citizens of Mercer Island. Whereas, Jim Pearman has served the citizens of Mercer Island with distinction for 10 years in public office on the Mercer Island City Council, with two years as deputy mayor, and the last four years as mayor. Whereas, Jim was first elected to the city council in November 2001, and subsequently re-elected to the position in November 2005 and November 2009. Whereas, during Jim's tenure of community service, Mercer Island experienced an era of great activity and achievement. Among the city's accomplishments were: Construction of a new community center; Securing city ownership of Luther Burbank Park; Funding major improvements to Pioneer Park, Mercerdale Park, Homestead Field, Island Crest Park, the high school football stadium, and South Mercer playfields; Construction of a main fire station and a new park-and-ride lot; Permitting and construction of the Boys and Girls Club's peak facility; Realization and implementation of the Town Center revitalization effort; Creation of a long-term funding plan for Mercer Island fire apparatus; Securing a 60-year water supply agreement; Creation of the Mercer Island-based emergency water supply well; Construction of the Sewer Lake Line, the city's largest and most complex capital improvement; Enactment of the city's tree ordinance, Town Center design guidelines, and design guidelines outside the Town Center; Enactment of the city's tent city ordinance, affordable housing tax exemption ordinance, and completion of a draft shoreline master program update; Partnership with the Mercer Island School District to keep Mary Wait Pool open and operational. Whereas, Jim's service as a city council liaison is an impressive list of municipal leaderships, including: Association of Washington Cities Legislative Committee 2005 to 2008; Design Commission 2004 to 2005; Disability Board 2002 to 2005 and 2010 to 2011. Wanna add some color commentary? Open Space Conservancy Trust 2003 to 2002 to 2003; Town Center Subcommittee 2002 to 2003; Community Center Subcommittee 2002 to 2003. So, busy period of time for you there. Community Center Review Subcommittee 2004 to 2005; Eastside Transportation Partnership 2004 to 2005 and 2008 to 2009; Lake Washington Mayors Forum 2010 to 2011; I-90 Steering Subcommittee 2006 to 2011; National League of Cities and Energy Environment Natural Resources Committee 2005 to 2008; Parks and Recreation Subcommittee 2003 to 2000... Sorry, 2002 to 2003; Parks Levy Stakeholder Ad-Hoc Committee 2008 to 2009; Public Safety Subcommittee 2006 to 2007; Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development District 2008 to 2008; Puget Sound Regional Council 2008 to 2009; Suburban Cities Association 2002 to 2009, including time on the Board of Directors from 2004 to 2008; WIRA-8 2002 to 2005, and Youth and Family Services Advisory Board 2008. Whereas, Jim will be remembered by his council colleagues for his openness, fairness, and even-handed facilitation of council meetings, as well as his willingness to hear all sides of an issue before making up his mind. Whereas, Jim has shown us all how to pull ivy, pull rowing strokes, and pull through life-threatening heart attacks. And whereas, by retiring from public office, Jim is sure to enjoy more time with his wife Codelin, and his daughters Charlotte and Julia. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mercer Island, on behalf of its citizens, the City Council commends Jim Pearman for his more than 10 years of distinguished public service, and extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for his time, his considerable skills, and his many contributions to Mercer Island, a community that he can always call home. Approved this 17th day of January 2012. Thank you, Jim. (applause) I have here the resolution for Jim. We have also a very large hunk of glass for Jim. You are?
Great.
And I think what we're gonna do, yes, is... You are very welcome. I'd like to thank you for your service. That long list was exhausting to read, and much more exhausting to participate in, I'm sure. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Holmes, who's got another award, and then we'll come back to council for comments.
Just please. So, thank you. Good evening, council. For the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief. And upon learning that Jim Pearman's last night would be tonight at the council, members of my police union asked that they could have a few minutes to come up and recognize Mayor Pearman for his work. So with that, I'll introduce Corporal John Pritchard and Officer Rob Cramp.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to say that as a member of the executive board of the Mercer Island Police Association, we understand that Mr. Pearman has worked long and hard for us and for everybody else in this city, but we wanted to let him know that we appreciate all the work he's done for us as members of the union. We have to recognize that he helped us reorganize the Department of Public Safety. We set up our emergency management division within the police department, and he was very instrumental in helping us with that. Our transition to NORCOM from our own communications center here on the island, our school safety planning, and the public safety education. But most importantly, your time here with us, you've shown a lot of respect for all the employees of the city of Mercer Island, and that's what we appreciate. So we have a little something here we wanna give you. Another piece of glass.[872.13][872.13](laughter) (applause)
Thank you very much for that. With that, I'd like to bring it back to council, and if anybody has anything they'd like to say, as Jim says goodbye to us going out the door here, this is your opportunity. So, maybe Mike, you wanna...
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll slide that in, work this way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, it's... It's been a true privilege serving with you on the council, and I truly appreciate the skill and professionalism that you have run these council meetings with. And I think, I think the way you have run them has been very productive with the dialogue, and just truly voicing all concerns on every agenda that we might have. You did a fantastic job, and I appreciate sincerely, and wish you all the luck in your new career.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, Jim, I'd like to echo the comments from the other mic, but also, the thing that I really appreciated was your sincere desire to help everybody. And to allow everyone to voice their opinions, voice their views, and do it really in a very calm and collected manner, even though sometimes it wasn't probably as calm and collected as we wanted it to be. Right. But, you know, you maintained your composure, you did a great job, and the thing that I will always remember is your heartfelt desire to protect Pioneer Park, to do all you can to ensure that that jewel remains just what it is, a jewel for the island. And I sincerely appreciate all of that work, particularly pulling all that ivy. That's a lot of work.
You can join me, Mike.[985.25][985.25](laughter)
I sincerely plan to. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Yeah?
Well, you know, clearly to the bluest member of the Mercer Island City Council. As I think was mentioned when L. left at the end of December, we all have colors on this council based upon our behavioral characteristics, and Jim is Mr. Blue, because blue is the person who facilitates, who is calm in the face of a storm, and who tries to bring people together, and which is why Jim was so effective as a mayor for four years. And it's, you know, Jim has always reminded us that unlike most of us, he grew up on this island. And he... We learned early on that Jim was a lifeguard on Mercer Island, and I'm sure a very good one. But it was sort of indicative, because it was Jim would tell us about, you know, how long he had lived in the house, and how long he had been involved in the community in one aspect or another, and several times mentioning that he'd have been a lifeguard. And not so that that was so significant, but the fact was, it just showed his roots in the community, and his willingness to get involved in the community even at a young age. Jim also has reminded us that when he started this job, he was six-foot tall, and to indicate the difficulty of being the mayor of the city of Mercer Island. The other thing is, I mean, Jim and I have not always seemed eye to eye. We've had our disagreements over the years, and some of them pretty serious. And some of them that Jim was rightfully quite upset about. What I always respected is the fact that even in spite of those disagreements, that somehow Jim was able to see his way clear in his capacity of mayor, not to make that be a problem in enabling this council, or enabling me to participate in this council to the extent that I wanted to participate. So I appreciate that, Jim, and know that it took a big person to manage to pull that off. So I... It's been a good, what, eight years? No, more than... It's good 10 years, 10 years.
Fun flies.
And you've served this community well, and I thank you for it.
Thanks. Thanks, Dan. Debbie?
Well, Jim, it's been about as brief as it could possibly be to be on the council.
You grew up on my cul-de-sac.
Well, that's it. But I was gonna say, that doesn't mean that the history isn't long and much appreciated. Jim and I grew up on the same cul-de-sac, so there's some family history there as well. But from the time that I returned to the island as an adult, Jim has been very supportive and incredibly encouraging in terms of proactive involvement in the community, and being proud of the roots, and sharing that broadly. So for that, I thank you. You've certainly supported me through the years, and I do very much respect the mediation, the calm demeanor. I've watched you steer a ship through some pretty turbulent waters, and done with grace and professionalism. So while you leave the council, I do hope that just as we were able to work together before this institution brought us together, that we can continue hereafter as well. And best of luck.
Jim?
Well, I have a little poem for you, Jim.[1240.58][1240.58](laughter) It's actually a rap, and now I'm not a rap singer, but imagine a throbbing bass going "Ba-boom, ba-boom." Listen up, Mercer Island, 'cause I got to say, we've got a mayor stepping down now, and tribute to pay. He's lived on Mercer Island since 1969, and he loves his here community. He thinks it's mighty fine. So he started volunteering, giving up his time to make the island better. It's a thing that defines the man who's recognized here for all the work he's done in charting the city's future in the short and long run. He's been serving on the city council since 2001, and the list of his accomplishments is varied and long. He led the charge to build a new community center. He's pulled ivy in the parks, spring, summer, fall, and winter. He's sat in endless meetings, boards, committees, and commissions. It's enough to give anybody a heart condition.[1298.01][1298.01](laughter) When council members parried in their long deliberations, he would keep them right on task with his skill at mediation. As a mayor, he'll be leaving a long legacy of fairness, common sense, and empathy. He's been in local public service for more than a decade. Now he'll be working for FEMA, a considerable upgrade. His name is Jim Pearman, and I think it's clear, from all that I've said, he really has no peer. To the Pearmans, Jim and Codelin, Charlotte and Julia, good luck and best wishes, which I'm sending right to ya.[1335.51][1335.51](laughter) (applause)
I saved my own comments for last, and that was a mistake. That was a mistake. There's no way I'm coming close to that.[1352.83][1352.83](laughter) I... From the time I've come onto this council, Jim has... Jim has been a guiding hand to me, has kept me out of a number of places I ought not to have gone, and I'm very glad that he did along the way. He became a mentor to me. He became a friend, and I really appreciate the effort he's put into helping me along, and helping, of course, in all the things that he's done for this community. And so with that, I say, thank you very much, Jim. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, no further raps, I don't think. We're gonna turn it over to Jim and let him have the mic for a bit.
Great. Thank you all. I was very touched by everyone's remarks, and this is the last time you're gonna hear me up here. And actually, I just wanted to say a few things, and recognize a few people. There were some special people that were gonna come and join us tonight, and the storm knocked them out of coming here tonight, but being involved with FEMA, how can I blame them, right? But anyway, I thought, since they weren't gonna be here, but it gives me an opportunity for you all to hear what I was gonna say about them, and I had a little something that I was gonna give them later on. And so I won't get another opportunity to do this, so if you indulge me, we'll just assume that they're here, and they can see this. The first thing is that I believe very strongly that public service is noble. I was brought up that way. My great grand... My great uncle was mayor of Seattle during the Depression. My grandfather was justice of the peace in Seattle, died at the height of the Depression, Smith Tower. My uncle was a Supreme Court justice judge for 30 years. My other uncle was a Supreme Court Chief Justice, and also a three-term state senator, and I was brought up with this as a very noble thing. And that was just kind of it. On my tier, I'm the only one in my group of cousins and everyone who did this, but I always thought that was a very noble thing, you know, deeply rooted when I was going through becoming an Eagle Scout and all that. And so this, to me, going through rotary and all the things, becoming a city council member, just is a normal progression. And that's how I ended here, ended up here. But I did want to recognize a few people, and I was gonna give them, and I will give them this later on, but 1976, when I was at the high school, a group of us, and you probably heard this, went out, and we did a fundraiser to raise money for the bicentennial committee. And I was in charge of it, and one day I talked, we had the largest class in Mercer Island history, it's close, 600 kids, and we went out on a Sunday, and we went and sold bicentennial medallions. And they're the only medallions that were ever actually minted for the city. And we went out and sold these, and we were so successful, at the end of the day, we funded the bicentennial park, that little park next to the recycling center. We bought a new flagpole for the high school, and we also endowed the Mercer Island bicentennial award, which more or less, since 1976, I've been giving out to one senior every year, who has shown that he understands, she understands, what service above self means. And it's every year, I'm very impressed, and I can't believe these kids do all what they do. But I present the award, I give them a medallion, and a check for 500 bucks. And we've been doing that since 1976, so we raised quite a bit of money to do that. So, and it's all about service, and I don't think any of you heard that before, but every year we do that through the PTA. With that, I had a few people that I wanted to recognize tonight, 'cause I think in this area, we have a tendency not to recognize people who do outstanding public service. I think a lot of times, a few people who have negative things, and who have agendas, steal press, they steal the public's eye, and good work is unrecognized and is not celebrated enough. So with this, I wanted to celebrate a few people. And the first one is R. Joni Earl with Sound Transit, and Executive Director. And Joni, for those people who don't know, Joni actually grew up around here, she's a Cougar. Her dad was the mayor of Bramerton, and then she got her first job out of school in Bramerton, and then went on to be a city manager up at Mill Creek. Was that right, the first one? And then, when Sound Transit was on its knees, I think really was on its face, they had the wisdom to hire Joni to come in and manage it. And she resurrected that, and she basically created an organization now that has, I believe, the Community Trust, and also, you can see the actual product of her work. In fact, I introduced her at quite a few different events, and I would say, here is our groundbreaking, moving, ribbon-cutting CEO, Joni Earl. And I couldn't tell you how proud I am. And the other thing, what I really like about Joni is that Joni, you'll have a debate with her, she'll come up, and she will treat everyone I've seen with absolute respect, at the same time she holds her ground. And real professional. And I think for anyone who wants a model for an outstanding public servant, look towards Joni. And one last thing I was gonna tell her is that this year, she reached her pinnacle of public service by becoming the Seafair Commodore. So that was Joni. But anyway, you see Joni, I'll give her this later on, but congratulations to Joni. The next one was Bob Drool, he's the Executive Director of Puget Sound Regional Council. He is a recovering elected, three terms Snohomish County Exec, and he is, who people don't know, Puget Sound Regional Council. They basically deal with transportation, economic development, and growth management, and Mike here works with them quite closely. A big organization. To get you an idea of how big it is, four counties, four ports, 72 cities, and nearly 500 elected officials. That's herding cats. And Bob does it with grace and finesse, and is just a wonderful guy to watch in operation, and he's just a real pro. And one of the things I tell you about Bob, after he left a three-term as the Snohomish King County Exec, who was opted out with term limits, I went up there, and they had a new administration building, and they decided to name it after Bob. So I went up there for the ceremony, which is a very cool thing, and I thought, oh, they're gonna name it the Robert Drool Administration Building, or they'll do something, the Drool Building, or I don't know. Well, they finally named it. It's just The Bob. So anyway, The Bob. But anyway, I think that that's very cool, speaks very highly of him. The next one... The next one is Fred Jarrett. And Fred Jarrett, of course, is one of our local kids. He grew up in a high school, and then went on, and he became the mayor of Mercer Island, two-term mayor. He was also, he couldn't get enough of this, so after he retired, he then decided to run for the school board. And after the school board, he went on to become House representative. After that, the senator. And then now, he is the deputy exec, King County exec. And the amazing thing about Fred is he went from the elected side to the staff side, and he's done a brilliant job of it. Just brilliant. He has restored confidence and integrity within King County. And also, I want to say something about Dow Constantine, who was the exec. Both of them ran against each other. And after the race, Dow won. And then Dow had the wisdom and personal strength to actually hire Fred to be his number-one guy. That says a lot about someone. And so both of them need to be complimented on that. And anyway, with Fred, if you haven't talked policy about Fred, he's a master, and it's just really, really fun. And the one thing about Fred, he's been a mentor of mine for quite a long time, but he did have one little thing that, my second election, we found out that we were expecting Julia. And he goes, "Jim, I cannot believe it. You would do that to get elected." So he had a baby in the middle of the election. And I said, "Wow, Fred, okay." But Fred is just an idol of mine. I think he's just great. The last person I wanted to recommend, or to recognize, rather, is Gary Plano, our school superintendent. 10 years ago, when I got on the city council, to say that the relationship between the city council and the school board was chilly as being kind. It was a deep freeze. It was really not a good place to be. And it takes people to make changes in relationships. And my business is mediating and talking. And you have to have, to be a successful mediator, you need to have someone who has goodwill and is willing to open themselves up and risk to talk about something to actually open it up. Gary's that guy. He was there four years ago. We decided that we had some communication problems. And with Rich's help and a little PowerPoint, we made a little grid of how we're going to communicate and how we're going to do some things. We also figured out how to do some committees to make things run a little better. But at the same time, it was not to thwart ideas or to work with one another. It was a communication thing so we could work better together. And it has really worked out extremely well. And we have moved that from a rather hostile relationship to now a very, very cooperative relationship. And we have now got some pretty big things coming forward, and Bruce has been real instrumental in that. But anyway, I wanted to really thank him. And also, for those who don't know, when I had my little heart attack that morning, it didn't, as the guys here will tell you, didn't look too good for a while. And so anyway, they made a call to Gary, that I was in the hospital. And Gary dropped everything and ran up to the high school and called my oldest daughter, Charlotte, out and said, "I'm driving you over to Overlake." And everyone, when they saw Charlotte being pulled out by the superintendent, went, "Ooh, what did she do? What did she do?" But anyway, she didn't do anything bad. But anyway, Gary, that was an incredibly sentimental thing. So Gary, if you're listening, thank you very much. And all of you, I have my Mercer Island medallion. It was worth $2.50 in 1976. And I bet you it's still worth $2.50. But the deal is, it's a sentimental thing, but it is a symbolic deal about community service. That was what this is all about. And so that's it. And so with those, I really say thank you all. And as far as, excuse me, my city council, I want to thank you, and I want you to also remember me with my token. And so I have these to give you. Okay? Mike?
Thank you. You're a nice, fantastic...
There we go. Mike?
Mayor Bassett?
Mayor Bassett?
And I sincerely, it's, I'm Irish, so maybe this is good luck, too. You can keep it in your pocket. And with that, there's one other thing I want to mention, is that as I'm going, one of my really pet projects has been the Boy Scouts. And we have a representative that has been with me on this, and it's always been a big deal to me to represent, to acknowledge the Eagles, and there's plenty of them on the island. Plus, they're incredibly good workers, and they do a lot of things for the island. And so I will challenge you, Mayor Bassett, to keep it going and to honor them and to make sure that they're recognized as we go forward.
We'll count on that.
Okay. Yeah. And the last thing I have to do, and I promise, if I could have my girls help me here, and they're going to escort a very important person up to, stage here. Ally, could you please come up with them? Okay, Ally, if you could come up here. Uh-huh? Come on. Okay. Now, as you probably remember, the last four years, one of the things that I do is, when someone does something really cool, and I think that they're great community servants and the Eagle Scouts or whatever, I'm going to try to keep this together. Then what I do is I take off my lapel pin. I'm going to give Ellie, Ellie, rather, my last one. Say goodnight, Jet.
Jim, did you want to introduce anybody else here in the audience?
Absolutely. Of course, my wife, Catlin, in the back of the room, who's put up with this for 10 years plus. Yes, and I have to tell you a little story, is that on the first round, I did not want to run for city office after the community center fun and games. And we put together the needs assessment, and then it failed in the ballot. And to be honest with you, I didn't think it was quite a clean campaign, and it was kind of mean-spirited. And at the end of it, as Jane will remember as the editor, the reporter. And so through that, I said, "That's it for public service." And then I got, I think, bullied by Judy Cliburn, who I represented, I have her seat, Fred Jarrett, Elliot Newman, and a bunch of the old mayors. I said, "Pierman, it is your time. You better do this." And so I said, "Uh..." So I did like, any good husband would do. I went down and filed, and then came home and asked for forgiveness. And so that's exactly what I did. And she still has not forgiven me. But anyway, having said that, it's been a great ride. And of course, you just saw my daughters. We've got Charlotte, who's graduating this year. Kind of hard to believe, so she's been through this the whole way. And Julia, my kindergarten, okay, is right there. Hi, sweetheart. And thank you so much. You can't do something unless you have a very supportive family, and I'm very blessed. And for all the staff here, it's been a great ride.
My parting words to you, Jim, are, "You're on my speed dial. You're not getting away." And with that, we're going to take a few-minute break, let the folks who are here who don't want to be pained by regular business escape, and let Jim also escape. So thank you, and we'll be back in, let's say, five minutes.
All right, we're going to, oh, we're not. Cue video. I'm getting the word, cue video. Cue video.
We're not going to be very good at this, but we'll do our best. So welcome back. We're going to, now with a much-reduced audience, the fun is over. Get back to the work of the evening, do our best. It's time for public appearances. So if anyone would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. You have three minutes to do that. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin, and speak audibly into the microphone. So with that, anybody like to address the council? Anything? And maybe on your way up, if you could pull the door closed, too. Thanks, Chief Dubs.
Please.
On the agenda has, it just says no parking, but it doesn't say anything about parking being okay in inclement weather on the sign. And I know when it's icy or snowy, or there's lots of leaves, it's very, very difficult to get out of my driveway, and all of our neighbors kind of end up parking up on the main road there. So just wanted to mention all that, because I know the sign says no parking dawn to dusk, and that would really be an issue for some of us. Also, I know that moving vans and contractors and there's like a trail, a trailhead right near where we live, that a lot of people come and park and use the trailhead during the day. So I just don't really understand, if it's an issue, I didn't realize it was an issue, because it hasn't been bothering any of us. Also, the red and white signs, in my opinion... Also, the red and white signs, in my opinion, are not so pretty. And it said in the proposal that I read that you wanted to have a sign every 200 to 500 feet. And so, when I did the math, I realized that that is a sign... There's 26 signs in one mile. And I live 2.2 miles from the I-90 on-ramp. So, on my commute every morning, I would see 58 no parking signs each way. And I don't know if you guys really realize how many signs that is. And I guess I didn't know how bad the problem is that I need to be reminded, because when I figure it out doing the math, did some math, and with a 200-foot spacing at 25 miles an hour, that would be seeing a no parking sign every five seconds. So, like I said, I don't know how bad the parking problem is, because it's not bothering me at all, but if it is, it must be pretty bad if you need to be reminded every five seconds. So, just kind of pointing out, sometimes things really look good on paper, that maybe sometimes when they're implemented, don't look so good. And maybe if the signs weren't red to really catch your eye, but maybe a quieter color, or as I was kind of reading through, it looks like there's an option to not have any signs and maybe not...
So I have to ask you to wrap up.
Do anything. Okay. So, that is my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? No, seeing none, I'm going to close public appearances. One thing, note to self, others remind you, this is for your benefit. It's the policy of council, and I want to speak to this each time we do this, that council won't respond directly to citizens' comments. And I think it's fair to let people know that, so they don't feel put off because of the way we handle that, but that's our standard policy. We'll certainly be speaking to that issue later in the evening, on our agenda is the parking issue. So, thank you. All right, and with that, we move two minutes of our January III meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
The January III meeting?
Sorry, second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January III meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving to the consent calendar. Anybody wish to move to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Good teamwork, yes. All right. All in favor of approving the consent calendar? Aye, opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Okay, moving on to our first item of regular business, Agenda Bill 4694, Investment Policy, and I think Chip, you're up.
Good evening. For the record, Chip Cordy, your Finance Director. Mayor, if you would permit me, I'd like to just do a very quick presentation, Francie and myself, and then we'll turn it over to council for questions. Is that okay?
Works fine for me. Okay with the rest of the council? Okay, please hold your questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me just introduce, first of all, for those who don't know, Francie Lake. Francie, stand up. My right hand, Deputy Finance Director. And let me also introduce Mark Rogers from Seattle Northwest Securities. And Seattle Northwest Securities is one of our financial advisors, and especially during debt issues, and they also have an investment side of the firm as well. Mark has been with them for a long time, since '97, and has 29 years' experience. And we thought we'd ask him to come along if the council has specific questions about investment policy, or investment objectives, or about securities, for that matter. A little background, first of all. As long as I've been here, about six and a half years, and actually before, we've been completely invested in what's called a local government investment pool. That's managed by the State Treasurer's Office. It mostly consists of bankers' acceptances and some really short-term securities. It's very liquid, lots of cities participate, and we've been involved in that for a very long time. Why? It's because I've sort of made a priority that I wanted our staff to focus on financial planning since I've been here. What do I mean by that? We had a new budget process back in '07-'08, for example. We focused on really looking at our capital improvement program, the six-year plan, and trying to do our due diligence, identifying what are needs, how much does it cost, look compared to our resources, projected resources, smoothing utility rates, using debt to finance major projects, like the Sura Lake Line. And then, of course, the past three years, the Great Recession. That's kind of pushed that off to the backburner. What's been sacrificed over the past three years in particular as a result? Roughly speaking, on average, on average, mind you, we have given up $40,000 to $60,000 a year in investment interest. That's been what's sacrificed to have Francie focus on financial planning, myself focus on financial planning. As a reminder, we are not Bellevue as a dedicated investment officer. We are not Kirkland as a treasurer, and so we're a small staff. And so, we can only afford to spend small bits of our time on investments. Why are we looking at this now? Why didn't we look at it a few years ago? It's actually been on my work plan for the last three years. It keeps getting pushed for some of the things I just mentioned there. The other reason, as you recall, when we came, when I came to the council back in November to share with you the latest evaluation performed by Milliman on our Left One Long-Term Care Reserve, that liability, significant liability out there for the city, as well as our Fireman's Pension Fund, I showed you a cash flow analysis, kind of a 30-year analysis, and my assumed investment interest rates. And there was a few council members that go, "Holy cow, why is it, you know, under half a percent?" And it's because we're at historic lows. And there was interest expressed in, "Let's, you know, why aren't we getting in the market? Let's at least take the Long-Term Care Reserve and the Fireman's Pension Fund, and let's invest that in the market." So, we decided to kind of bump this up in our work plan. I wanted to bring a policy to the council for you to kind of look at and react to before we went off and started hopping, you know, investing some of our available cash. Also, additional background, when you look at the whole spectrum, okay, of investments, from a risk perspective, I've put it in tabular format. I would have preferred to do kind of a line, if you will. From the highest is very risky. We are limited in the state where we can invest in. And on the investment perspective, we're at the far end of conservative. And, you know, whether it's government-related treasury bonds, notes, you know, CDs, bankers' acceptances, it's very, very conservative stuff. We cannot invest in corporate bonds, for example. I can't invest in stocks or mutual funds. We are prohibited from that. And so, we're very, very limited. It's a very small, little part of the spectrum. Sure. This is not an exhaustive list. Yes, government bonds, debt, that assumes a AAA, high rating. And we can invest, for example, in the debt of other municipalities, the University of Washington, as a couple of examples. That's why I invited our investment professional, Mark Rogers. Invite you up to the microphone.
You can invest for longer than 180 days in commercial paper in the state. It's capped pretty much 90 days, excuse me, 100 days and under, and has to be one of the top rating, A1, P1, top ratings. If you invest for 90 out to 180 days, the long-term rating of the bond, or the commercial paper, the parent company, has to be AA or AAA rated. So, it's because of the short term, they can look at commercial paper. Most of the entities I deal with, at least in today's environment, aren't buying commercial paper, but it is there if things change.
But even though you could sell bonds at any time if you want to, generally, that doesn't make a difference? I mean, I realize that's got a maturity, but you can still, there's always a market for corporate bonds.
Yes, pretty much everything is liquid at current market value, but it is liquid.
I understand that, but why is there a distinction between corporate bonds and commercial papers?
It's a short-term funding versus a long-term funding. The corporate bonds are issued on a longer-term basis. The commercial paper is very short. Commercial paper can't be any longer than 270 days.
No, no, I just said that already. But you can sell a corporate bond anytime you want to sell a corporate bond.
Correct. But it's going to be at the market value. If interest rates go higher, you're going to sell it for less.
Sell this commercial paper.
Okay, but most of the time, most entities in the state hold to maturity. So by sticking with a very short maturity, they don't want into that. And they aren't buying with the intention of selling it. If the need came up that they had to sell, yes, it is saleable. But the entities I deal with pretty much are not buying it with the intention of selling it before maturity.
Thanks. When you look at our cash as of end of last year, a little over 25 million, 25.5 million in total cash. The way I view cash, just to kind of simplify things, is I break it into three categories. Working capital, what do I need, okay, in each of our funds, our general fund, each of our utility funds, to maintain a positive balance in the fund, given all the inflows and outflows? We have accounts payable on a weekly basis. I've got to make sure I have cash to cover the accounts payable. Then the next category is that cash which is reserved or committed for a specific purpose. Examples include our contingency fund, which is a rainy day fund, for example, our Left One Long-Term Care Reserve I mentioned earlier, Fireman's Pension Fund. And then finally, you have what's left over, the remaining fund balances. And with effectively no strings attached. So those are the three categories I kind of break them into. Our investment plan is to take that second category, the reserved and committed cash, which is about eight and a half million, a third of the 25.5 million, and start investing that beginning February, March timeframe. There's a few administrative things we need to do. And if you're wondering, you know, let's get out there and let's start investing that, you know, in the longest term possible, you know, five years, for example. The reason you don't want to do that, you want to do what's called ladder year investments. And you have, you know, 90 immaturities, six-month maturities, year, 18 months, two years. In the current environment, I would not recommend, and Mark would concur, going out five years. There's not a lot of incentive to do that. Why tie your money up for that when the belief is returns will improve eventually? And so, we're saying we don't want to go out more than... Look, I don't want to go out more than three years. And quite frankly, I'll be hard-pressed, and it'd be hard to persuade me to go out three years. I'll probably stick with two years and under, given the current environment. The third category, that remaining fund balances, Francie's going to do a cash flow analysis on that chunk of change. And we want to do it as part of the budget process. Why? Because a big piece of the budget process is we do our six-year CAP plan. That's sort of a cash flow analysis. You look at incoming resources such as wheat, and your outgoing expenditures for capital projects. It's really helpful to know that six-year plan that's ultimately adopted by the council, and that forms a basis for our investment plan for the coming years. With that, little background, let me invite Francie up here to kind of talk about current rates of return, as well as our investment policy.
Okay, again, for the record, Francie Lake, Deputy Finance Director. And so you can see, all of our money is currently in the local government investment pool. Over this last year, our earnings have averaged .1674, so 16th one-hundredths of a percent. This last December, just this last spending month, .13. By investing in federal agencies, you can see we gain a little bit of, a little more return. Still very safe investments. And I've shown, we've shown, thanks to Mark, not the return on non-callables. So a non-callable investment is an investment you make and you hold it for the full, it's held for the full term. A callable has periods of time during the investment when it can be called or paid off to us. And for that, we get a little bit higher return for taking that risk of having it called early. We get a little bit higher return. So, you can see, there's just a little bit of additional interest that could be earned by going out two years, or possibly three years. So I wanted to then touch on our proposed investment policy. Really, the purpose of an investment policy is, first and foremost, to protect the city, and as well as the staff, and to just give clear guidance to brokers and dealers on what we can invest in and how. The document that you have is a very standard document for government agencies in Washington State. It was developed using the Washington Municipal Treasurers Association's model policy. And it's based on, for us, the following prioritized objectives. First of all, legality. Of course, we would conform to our Washington statutes governing the investment of public funds. And safety. Secondly, just to provide security of the principal. Thirdly, liquidity to meet our daily cash flow needs. And lastly, yield to secure a higher investment return. And the investment policy is included in Exhibit 1 attached to Resolution 1451. Just some other things that are covered in the policy. The policy defines which of the city's funds may be invested, who's authorized to manage the city's investment program, which is your Finance Director and his delegate, probably me. How security and brokers and dealers will be selected, what the city can invest its available cash in, those very restricted, safe investments that Chip showed you. Defines that we will have safekeeping and custody for our security transactions. It spells out how the investments will be diversified, and what the limits are by type of investment. The maximum maturities are defined at five years. And finally, it spells out an annual review process for compliance with procedures and internal controls, and some performance goals and reporting requirements. And then finally, I wanted to touch on our investment, how our investment earnings get allocated. And we have a policy, a budget, administrative policy within the each budget. So in the 2011-12 budget, and it's reviewed every time we go through the budget process. The policy that's currently in the 2011 and 12 budget was, as a reminder, temporarily amended because of our low returns. And specifically, it excluded the fire apparatus, funding the Left One Long-Term Care Fund, and the contingency fund from those funds receiving interest. And so tonight, we're recommending to amend that policy for 2012 to include back in the Left One Long-Term Care Reserve in those funds that would receive interest. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Chip.
Okay, in terms of council actions, there's two motions included in your Agenda Bill. One is passing the Investment Policy Resolution 1451, and then a motion disregarding amending our current budget policy to include, as Francie mentioned, the Left One Long-Term Care Reserve. With that, the presentation is concluded. Are there specific questions of staff or of Mark while he's here?
Thank you, Chip. Council, who would like to start off with questions? Anyone? Dan?
A few questions. I was a little bit surprised, or not surprised, just curious, on Section 5 of the proposed policy on Page 6. The last sentence talks about investment officers acting in accordance to the policy and exercising due diligence, will be relieved of personal responsibility. Which, whether or not that's the right position, is one issue. But I was surprised, see, that's in an investment policy. And the investment policy, from my standpoint, is to give you direction from the council as to how you are to invest. But I have never seen a policy which purports to exonerate a city official explicitly in the policy for acting in accordance with the policy. We pass lots of policies, and we don't include exonerations in there, you know, express exonerations for acting in accordance with the policy. I just, it seemed strange to me. I don't know where that came from.
This is just standard boilerplate language used by other cities. In that sentence, again, it mentions, you know, there's market price changes. There is some risk associated with these. And, well, we'll use our best judgment, it could be we're wrong from time to time. could be we're wrong from time to time.
And I, I'm not disagreeing with that. But I mean, we hold, we, and I don't, I'm not, I don't for a minute know what the state law standard is as to what personal liability you or Rich or anyone else that works for the city can have. But I, I just don't ever recall us passing any policy which included a statement which creates a standard which may be different from state law. I don't know, Katie, is there a state law standard on liability of city employees?
I'd have to check the state law standard, but I believe that this was consistent with what the, what the common, I'm not thinking of the term, but...
Well, I can understand in the private sector. I'm just not clear...
I think, Dan, where you're heading is as long as city employees are working within the course and scope of their employment, they carry no personal liability. They are covered by our insurance carrier and by state law.
I think, I think part of the difference here too, Dan, is, sorry, Councilmember Grass, is that the...
The city mayor.
You're not doing...
They're having a charm.
Point taken. Is that they're not holding themselves out as investment people that you might get on the private market where you're out shopping for someone to actually do those things for you, that they're within the context of their job. So I can research that more if you'd like.
And again, I don't object, Chip, to what it says.
I know what you're saying.
I'm just, it's not something that I've ever seen as put in a policy before.
Let me invite Mark, he has a few things to add to that.
For the record, I forgot to, for Mark Rogers, Seattle Northwest Investments. An example of that would be recently, over in the Wenatchee area, they had the Public Facility District, that at the time, the people bought the bonds, they fit under the categories of what was a qualified investment. The bonds, when it came time come due, the greater Wenatchee area didn't have the bonds and they went into default. So that is to say that at the time, the investment officer purchased the investment, it fell into all the parameters. Now that it's come due, it went bankrupt. They didn't do anything wrong, they followed all the procedures. So I believe that's what it's saying as far as they wouldn't be held liable for the law. Is that...
No, and again, in the private sector, that doesn't surprise me. It's just, I, we have, we have tons of policies. We, you know, we have our police chief and our fire chief who are required to comply with a million policies, and we don't have anything in the policy which says that if the chief does it in accordance with the policy, then he has no personal liability. It's just, we just, that statement doesn't exist, to my knowledge, in any other policy the city's ever adopted. That doesn't mean he has personal liability, because it's controlled by state law, I'm sure, what his liability is. I just, I wouldn't want a separate standard just for the finance director. If, I don't want, I don't want every other city department had to come to us and say, "I want to provision my next policy, which says if I do things like you guys tell me and I act with due diligence, then don't call me."
I think one of...
I was just going to say, I would just urge, rather than to spend a lot of time on this, I think the city attorney ought to just check with our insurance carrier to see whether or not any of our investment officers carry any personal liability for just doing their job. And if the answer is no, then I don't think we need this. But if the answer is maybe, then probably do.
So I, that, so other questions? The table on the top of Page 9, which is probably the, at least from my standpoint, the most important part of this policy, because it puts limitations on how you can diversify the investment. Those percentages are, those are your recommendations, or they're not, those aren't required by law? Those are what you, in your, in your wisdom, believe are the prudent allocations for risk purposes?
Borrowed from the City of Kirkland, yes.
Okay. So if, I mean, I was curious, for example, that where you, you limit yourself, for example, to 5% for bankers' acceptances. And if I heard what you said before, either you or Mark, that the state investment pool is primarily bankers' acceptances, or someone made that comment?
I did.
You did.
Actually, at the moment, the state pool, bankers' acceptances really aren't readily available right at the moment. Five, 10 years ago, they were a very active investment. But I haven't, I've seen one bank, Bank of America, has had several lately, but it's not an investment vehicle that I've seen of late. The state pool is primarily in treasury bills, discount notes, and then other agencies of the government, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank, and Federal Farm Credit. But there aren't a lot of bankers' acceptances being used at the moment.
And so, okay, and then, so the other one here, which has got any potential yield upside, would be commercial paper, right in the current market. Everything else is pretty much...
Correct.
Particularly if you're three years or less maturity, you're still, you're playing around at 1%.
But if you looked at commercial paper, you're still probably looking at three tenths, quarter of a percent to three tenths of a percent for the duration. Maybe you get four tenths of a percent, so there really isn't a lot of yield in commercial paper either.
So that's the yield increment, or that's the, that's the total yield?
That's the total yield.
On an annual basis, or just...
Correct.
Wow.
Rates pretty, pretty bad right now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, what else?
Got it right?
I misspoke when I said, I've had bankers' acceptances on the brain, because I've had
questions about what those are exactly. It's really repurchase agreements, regrements, which are termed repos, that 40-plus percent of the pool has been invested in. So not, not BAs.
Okay. I know, Mike, you've got some. You want to go?
Sure. The reason we're doing this, I got the impression from you, Chip, one of the reasons is that we have the time within your staff to do it. I got that impression.
No. I'm choosing to make, we're still very busy getting through this recession. I'm choosing to make, it's been a goal of mine to make a little bit of time. Let me give you a little perspective. I don't have time, nor does Francie, to field phone calls on a daily basis, even a weekly basis, on investments. That's not, in my judgment, the best use of my time and Francie's time. What we do have time is on an annual basis, kind of do a cash flow analysis, looking at a few years, and talk to someone such as Mark Rogers, and let him know, here's what we have that's out there in terms of available cash, and how long we can tie it up for. What do you recommend? And you get bids from brokers that are out there. And you touch base with them sort of annually, and then you touch base maybe quarterly, is when I'm envisioning opportunities to invest cash or to maybe to sell an existing security, take advantage of a better opportunity. So I'm looking to keep our time minimal, very minimal. I mean, we're less than 5% of my time.
Okay. Well, that kind of leads into my next question. So what I understood is that we're anticipating clearing an additional $40,000 to $60,000?
We're looking over the past three years.
Right. Okay. So what I have also gotten from your presentation is that there's going to be a broker involved, there's going to be a dealer involved, there's going to be, in Evilly, there's going to be additional staff time involved, and there's going to be an additional audit by our state auditor, which obviously costs us money. So with those four entities and whatever else I'm not including, is that going to offset any benefit that we're getting, that $40,000 to $60,000? I mean, how much more are we gaining?
That's looking historically, I would expect to do better than that at some point in the future. Those are net rates of return, when I report that additional .4% to .6%. That was a net of costs.
Okay. So this local government investment pool that we have been investing up to this point, I mean, I've been on the council long enough to remember, gosh, we're getting some good return from our investments, from this local government investment pool.
Yeah, we used to be in the fives at one point.
It used to be very good. I remember us saying, going through the budget and saying, and we've got some really good returns. So the poor returns that we're getting now, that's just a function of the times that we live in at the moment. And eventually, it's going to turn around to where we'll be back the way we were before with this known entity, local government investment pool, and we'll be giving, be returning, getting returns that we're comfortable with, once again. So is it wise that we try something completely new? And one thing I don't think has really been talked about is with return is risk. You don't get additional return with risk. I mean, in the past, we've been very, very happy with this local government investment pool, and it just happens now that everybody is getting a very low return. Shouldn't we be satisfied with that return?
You're making all very good points and good questions. Couple things. One, and I neglected to mention this earlier, one of the reasons I've also been waiting on the investment thing is, the treasurer's office has been talking about creating a separate intermediate pool. Well, for a small city like Maristown, that sounded ideal. They have people manage their money for longer terms, and I can get a better rate of return and take advantage of that, so then I don't have to deal with any phone calls whatsoever. And, but that just, it keeps running into a roadblock, and they say it's still on their, you know, stove, so to speak, but I have no timeframe about when they'll have this investment, this intermediate pool put together. That would be great, but that's not an option right now. In terms of risk, the way I look at risk, as it relates to this, because again, these are really conservative investments, but the risk, risk, the greater risk is the time I spend and that Francie spends on this, that we could spend on other things. And that's why I'm trying to keep it minimal, because I agree, I would never recommend spending a quarter of my time or quarter of Francie's time. That would be not prudent, in my judgment, but very small amounts of time.
So I would value your additional comment on why we shouldn't be satisfied with the local government investment pool, where in years past, we have been, and it's just a sign of the times or the reality at times, that we're just going to get a low return from this or any others.
To be honest, I'm not unsatisfied with the local government investment pool. It works for me. And what, I'm responding in part, trying to be a good finance director and get you a better rate of return, and in part, to council's interest expressed last November.
Exactly. And we appreciate, and we appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
Rich? In fairness to Chip, actually, Mike, you're asking really good questions, as he said. And what Chip's not saying is if you, if we hearken back to our November mid-biennial budget discussion, it did come up then, and there was, in that discussion, a request, I don't, I can't characterize it as a council consensus, but a request that we come back in 2012 and ask a question about can we do a little better on investments? So he's really responding to that. Ultimately, I think what Chip's trying to tee up here is, is this how you want me to spend some of my time? We're prepared to do it, here's how I would do it. If the council thinks, no, we like what you've been doing before, and we'll take the returns on investment that we've been getting and hope for the best in the future, that's fine too. He's teeing it up because you guys asked for it, and I said that's the right thing for us to do. It's time that we have this conversation.
All right. We'll agree to go through this process. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Mike, Grady? No? Jane?
No. I was just going to point out the fact that Chip is responding to what the council asked for. And, you know, I think we were shocked at how low the returns were on the firemen's fund, and it was horrible. But that is a reality of where we are, and I think we do need to weigh Chip's time. And perhaps this is a time, though, that we could for, for one year, perhaps allocate some money outside of the LGIP, as long as it doesn't take a lot of time from, for Chip and Francie.
Yeah. I can't let it, and just one other point, we have quite, you know, a number of funds, like Fireman's Pension Fund, again, a very long 30-year time horizon, where we have the opportunity to, when rates improve, we should invest in some five-year securities, absolutely. Because I don't need cash, you know, tomorrow or next year. I can ladder it and go up to five years. And so we're missing on some rates of return. Again, right now, there's no incentive to go up five years, but there will be an incentive eventually.
Thanks. Debbie? We're on questions at this point, by the way, so we'll come back to council interest.
Taking into account what Mike has said and some of the other comments, basically what we're saying is that there was a standard, there was a reasonably satisfactory level of return from the original investment pool.
Given how liquid it is, yes.
Yes. Would you say that generally, some of the investments that you're looking at here are always going to be somewhat proportionally higher than where it has been?
Yes, because we'll be tying it up for longer periods of time.
So essentially, then, what we're saying is even if, if we return to those original 5% returns, these funds are still going to be X percent higher, probably than the same standard that we, which we've been investing?
Correct.
Okay. That was just point for personal clarification.
Yep.
We're basically raising the bar one notch on our expectations.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mike?
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion if there's further questions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Resolution Number 1451, establishing an investment policy of city funds.
Discussion. Mike, you made the motion, you want to, do you have any discussion?
No, I'm just harking back to our discussion, Chip, in November, where we were looking at ways to incrementally add to our cash flow and look more in the long term. So I think you've taken the right approach, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I will echo that. I mean, I think that, I was one of the people back in November that Rich was referring to, who was pushing for this review. As we are reminded on a regular basis, primarily by ourselves, is that we're running a business here, and that we are need to conduct ourselves in a businesslike manner in terms of our staffing, in terms of our expenditures. And any business worth its salt has a treasury, which tries to do what it can to maximize yields within accepted standards of risk. You look at what's in this investment policy, and those other issuers that we're now going with include the United States government, and include commercial paper from, from the highest-rated companies, and short-term commercial paper, bankers' acceptances. This is not high-risk stuff. This is not the kind of junk that, that some of the governments down south got messed up on. So this is a very, very conservative investment. This is an opportunity, even based upon the very low rates we're dealing with now, to get a $40,000 to $60,000 spread. My guess is, as rates go up, that spread gets even higher. And, you know, we're talking about the need to fund left one, we're talking about the need to fund firefighters' pension, and if we don't start taking steps like this, then we're just going to complicate our lives going forward. So this, this is a very, this is an overdue thing, and I appreciate you putting it together. And I think that this is definitely a good step forward, and I encourage you to get it implemented ASAP.
Jane, Debbie, any comment?
I think it's a very good plan, low risk, and in this investment environment, any tenth of a percent makes a big difference. $40,000 to $60,000 is, is something important for us. I think the low risk and even minimal yield, and as the market changes, that yield will be greater. So I, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have reservations about this, and I'm not going to support that, because I don't think it's as different as this, the local government investment pool of which we've been investing with, and have been getting, and have been very pleased with its performance from a historical perspective. And I think we're reacting just from this temporary situation that we're in now. Will the goals and objectives of this new program be the same as the local government investment pool? Yes, they're the same. It's, the LGIP is safety of principle, maintaining adequate liquidity of, for cash flows, providing competitive interest rate relative to other comparable investment alternatives. And LGIP offers 100% liquidity to its partners, to its participants. And what's not being recognized, I don't think fully, is the additional time, and Chip will use good judgment in not spending, we hope, too much time on it, but it will take additional time from him and his staff to manage this program. In a time when my position is to outsource as much as you can of the, of government services. And this is just, you know, normally, we see, we associate outsourcing with, you know, cleaning our sewer drains or planting trees in the park. Well, we can also extend that, and we should extend that theory of efficiency in government to the white-collar workers, or to the finance department. And that outsourcing takes the form of the LGIP, which we've been historically very pleased with and very satisfied. It's just this anomaly of extremely low rates across the board that we're saying, we need more, we need more. Well, that... Well, that more comes at risk. Return equals risk. And for that reason, I don't plan on supporting this motion.
So if I could, Mike, I had actually the same question you had about cost versus benefit on this. That was the right question to be asking and I feel satisfied that Chip's responded to that with a great deal of sensitivity towards minimizing the staff time yet achieving the result here, so I'm comfortable with that. As to the question of risk, I, I view this as the question of whether I could have my money back tomorrow or not and not so much a question of whether the money could be lost. What I understand this is, we're saying, here's money that we know we don't need back tomorrow, we're happy to get it back in 180 days or we're happy to get it back in 365 days and someone's willing to pay us a higher rate of return to have that money, knowing that they can keep it that long. So I'm comfortable supporting this. I think that, I understand that the idea is that these kinds of investments will likely always yield a slightly higher rate of return than the, than the fully liquid pool and so it seems like a good investment for us. So with that, if anyone else have comments, are we ready to take a vote? All right, all those in favor of motion to pass Resolution Number 1451 establishing an investment policy of city funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Mike? Motion passes.
May I quickly, Mr. Mayor, council, if we're going to do this, thank you for picking this time to do it. I've always been a believer that it's into slow economies, is the best time for us to go try things that we haven't done before. You know, it's actually a low-risk time for us to go out there, put in a policy, try it out, adjust. So this is, this is the right time for us to be doing this and I appreciate the council giving us a nudge and we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Dan, sorry. Mr. Mayor, move to direct staff to modify the investment allocation budget policy to include the left one long-term care reserve in the allocation of investment earnings.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this. Anybody want to tee off?
Ask a question, why wouldn't we also do the fire apparatus fund at the same time?
I could, I'm, I'm just making a choice to focus on what I view as the greater priority and I was going to tee that up during the budget process in terms of fire apparatus later this year.
How much money is in that right now?
Well, I haven't been able to alloc, I'm forgetting the balance right now. I haven't been able to allocate any investment interest in it for the past one, two, two years, I believe it is. And so, and as you recall, what's critical about that is when that got funded, it was using bank capacity, okay, plus investment interest to make up the difference. The problem with that particular financing approach is over time, the amount of investment interest I became, it didn't just go up gradually, it was significant and because the, the bank capacity is basically flat, right? And so, in any case, that is, that is concerning. I was going to tee this up as a budget issue for the council at your mini-planning session and talk about what are our options here.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we, at a minimum, in order to stop the gap getting bigger and bigger, already at least allocate investment earnings to that fund?
Because it is so pitiful, to use my favorite technical term. You're right, it a little bit helps, but it is so absolutely minute.
Well, I mean, I take your word, but I just don't know what's in the fund right now. I don't know what's...
$343,000 is what I'm hearing behind me.
But that's still, even at 1%, that's $10,000 a year.
Yeah, we're not getting even 1%, but...
Well, if you could get 1%, you'd get $10,000. I mean, I just...
It's going to go down because we have some big purchases coming up here. We're in the process of, of lease purchase agreements on a Maxi engine and another fire apparatus that's going to draw down the cash balance severely. Not severely, because I'll meter it out, but it'll draw it down significantly.
Kind of along that line, what happens to the identity of the funds with this, the investment money, the monies that we get from these investments?
Allocated.
The investment, the identity of the funds, where do the funds go? The interest, where does it go?
It gets allocated to the, I have, I'm legally obligated to allocate to certain funds such as the utilities, they get their fair share based on their cash balance. I do that for a few other funds...
Well, that's the question I was, that's the answer I was looking for.
I didn't hear.
It's allocated back to the source.
Yes, yes, but I have discretion and I can choose, I do this as a budget policy and I run this by the council. We can choose to allocate no interest to the capital improvement fund, for example. I'm just making this up and that's in fact what we do. And thereby maximizing, once I've done the funds, I have to do it too and reserves that I have to allocate it to, I can then give the rest to the general fund. And, but again, I tee this up every two years to the council, how we allocate it. I do have discretion. I just don't allocate it based on the cash balance in every single fund. I allocate it based on the cash balance of certain funds and certain reserves within funds.
So it's not a strict identity?
I have discretion per the policy.
And what are the guidelines of those, of that discretion?
My judgment, basically, on where the money's needed the most, which I then run by the council to see if you concur or not.
You've got to remember, we actually do come to the council and lay out for you, for them to plan for how it gets allocated.
Other folks don't even run it by the councils, but I do bring it to you.
However, Chip, don't the, those enterprise funds in the utility accounts, they have, they have to remain separate, do they not?
Yeah, they, they get their fair share. I have to make sure they get their fair share based on the cash balance, cash investment balance.
Okay, we sort of turned it into Q and A rather than discussion. Any further questions or discussion? All right, I'll bring it back for a vote then on the motion to direct staff to modify the investment allocation budget policy to include the left one long-term care reserve in the allocation of investment earnings. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mark, Francie, Chip, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on now to Agenda Bill 4695, BLS Fee for Transport Code Amendments. I think we have Chief Tubbs.
Good evening, council. For the record, Chris Tubbs, Fire Chief. Just to remind council, this past November 21st, as part of the Finance Director's mid-biennial budget report and our BLS Fee for Transport report, council directed staff to bring back a draft ordinance that would extend the BLS Fee for Transport program from March 17th to the end of 2012, December 31st, 2012. That is in your packet as Exhibit 1. Additionally, council asked us to draft a resolution that council could discuss and debate to implement a fee collection on mileage. That also is attached to the Agenda Bill and that's Exhibit 2. As a reminder to council also, we will be coming back after the March 17th time period with our annual metrics report on the BLS Fee for, excuse me, BLS Fee for Transport program. And with that, I'll open it up for questions. There's no presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Questions? Mike, I'm guessing you've got some.
So I said I was, I would get a buzz cut if we actually sunset this thing. You think I would have to get my hair cut?
It's council decision.
I think we sunset one day. Actually, I have a question for the city manager. So the monies that we're getting from this BLS, those are being used where previously would have been used by the general fund?
Well, I think the answer to your question is, the revenues generated by this ambulance transport fee goes into the general fund, it's general fund revenue and has no strings attached, it can be used for any legal municipal purpose. And so before we had it, we had other general funds paying for the package of services we have. Now that we do have it, it is just added to the whole general fund pot to pay for the package of services that we have.
So basically, or another way of saying that is that we've increased the tax base and provide, and have provided, and have provided the same level...
I'm going to give you more ground than I've ever given on this question. It's still technically a fee, but I'll concede that, yes, we raised revenue, it looks like a tax increase. It is technically a fee because it's a fee for service, but it's just going into general fund revenue. It's a fee.
Question?
Okay. Well, all right, I guess Dan does make a point that it does have to be, to be made. There is an ambulance transport fee that is paid by the ambulance service companies to us and if it weren't paid, it's actually coming from the insurance companies for the patient and it's coming to us, if it hadn't been coming to us, it would have gone to the ambulance transport companies. And in that sense, it's, it's a fee that's being paid instead to a private sector entity is being paid to a public sector entity. So it's debatable whether or not you call that an increase or not. It's just, it's a diversion from one endpoint to another. Is that closer, Dan?
All right. Jane?
Just had a quick question, Chief Tubbs. The $15 per mile fee, do other jurisdictions similar to ours who, who collect emergency transport, do they charge a fee and is it based on gas, wear and tear on the vehicle? Where'd the, where'd the $15 come from?
The short answer is yes. Most of the other agencies in this area do also charge a mileage fee. We were sort of unique when we implemented our program by not charging that mileage fee. The $15 fee is a median of what the other agencies in this area are doing. We partially derived it based on that, but also it is the, the amount that Medicare pays at 100%. And so, as you, to remind council, the mileage reimbursement rate for Medicare or Medicaid is at a much higher percentage than the base fee.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Just a quick one about the $15 per mile. You said it was unique that it wasn't included in the original proposal. Was there a specific reason or it just wasn't?
Well, when we had the discussion and the debate during the budget process originally, we, we as staff decided we'd just bring a simple proposal to the council. AMR, private sector ambulance company, has several different components to their, their fee and we decided, rather than to mirror everything that they did, we just simply would want to charge what they charge for a transport. And to the extent that we don't charge mileage fees or anything else, our citizens are going to get a slight break if the city of Mercer Island provides this service. We can do it, there's no reason why we, we can't. We just originally did it, we thought the revenue that was going to be generated by the basic transport met our financial needs. We, we were just looking for an amount of revenue, we thought we would get it. It turns out we haven't received quite as much as we thought, but that was the thinking at the time.
Let's not confuse things with this $15 per mile fee. It's not going to cost the citizens of Mercer Island one extra penny to do that. That's part of the insurance reimbursement formula. All we're saying is that the original formula we came up with last year did not maximize the insurance reimbursement. We're a little bit wiser now and now we understand what one needs to do to, to get within the framework for where insurance companies reimburse us. So this, this is, this is not, should not be viewed as an increase in the fee. This is just taking advantage of the full reimbursement formula, which was, I think, our intention all along, we just didn't know enough back then to understand how to do it.
Let's, let's continue with questions if others have questions before we, we bring this back. So other, other questions? No? One I would have, would so, can you give me a sense of what the average ambulance service user is going to pay in terms of a mileage fee?
Well, we, we estimate that a trip is about six miles, so $15 per six miles is what that would amount to. The projected net collection is about $25,000 for a one-year of transport program.
Sir, are they paying just then for the, the trip in which they're in the ambulance or do they also have to pay a home base fee to get it back?
There's a, there's a flat fee and then if the council approves the mileage portion, they would be billed that as well.
But the, the mileage is one-way?
Correct.
Okay. The insurance company would pay one-way?
Even more correct.
Debbie question? Mike?
So nothing's for free, so were those insurance rates increases result of that to the population?
What we have been told by every sort of avenue we've pursued in regards to that, the answer is no, that the insurance companies build that into the rate schedule. That's why you've sort of heard this clarification that there's no increased cost to the taxpayer, that they're already paying that. What we're simply doing is diverting that money from a private company back into the local community, but there is no increase in their insurance premiums.
The rate, rates have stayed the same because they're paying it now. They're not, it's not increasing the amount that gets paid. Just, it's whose pocket it gets paid to.
And I know this is discussion, not discussion point, but I, I think there's an advantage of having that money going to a private business versus a monopoly government. But another point that I'd like to ask is, refresh me my memory on what happens when you pick up a self-insured patient or someone who doesn't have the means to pay?
Well, it's two separate questions. Someone who doesn't have the means to pay, the billing company will, first of all, determine where they fit on the federal poverty schedule and based on that, they may not pay anything at all and, and the invoice will be simply written off. Those who have the ability to pay, the billing company will, will work to get that fund, get the funding from them, but we don't send them to, to collections.
Other questions? No? Okay, let's bring it back to council. Thank you, Chris. Let's bring it back to council for discussion. Anybody want to tee off discussion? Mike?
Well, this is nothing against you, Chief, but, so don't take it personal. I have a fundamental problem with this program, so once again, I will vote against it and I won't even go into the long list of details because we've gone down that road before. But I do appreciate you keeping a close eye on the numbers and look forward to the annual report. And I also look forward to that buzz cut. I don't think you'll see it.
I guess, and I should say, before we get into discussion, we probably need a motion on the table so that we can have a fruitful discussion. Anybody care to make a motion so we can move forward with that?
I would move to suspend City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2 requiring a second reading of an ordinance.
Second.
Discussion on that.
And the reason I think that's appropriate, just so we're clear on this, is because we had a very lengthy discussion on this topic at the end of last year, so this is not the first time it's coming before the council.
Mike, you...
All right, well, let's vote on that and go on to the next questions.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of motion to suspend City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2 requiring a second reading of an ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes and, okay, so another motion?
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 12C-01 authorizing the collection of basic life support transport fees through December 31st, 2012.
Second.
Okay, Jane, did you want to speak to that first?
I'm in favor of it.
Very good.
Simple.
I love brevity. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll speak to just, and this, this is, this is very, we gotta not lose sight of what's going on here. I, on the one hand, I understand Mike Zero's notion of public versus private and I appreciate that's a, that's a fair argument to make. From the city's standpoint, though, we have various assets that we believe as a council or believed when we adopted this before were underutilized and had the potential to be optimized through this program. But the beauty of this program for islanders is... But the beauty of this program for islanders is that it doesn't cost them anything more, and it actually saves them money because the city doesn't go after the deductible. If they are being taken by the ambulance, the private ambulance company, they're going to have to pay the deductible to the private ambulance company. City doesn't go after it. City doesn't go after people who can't pay, for whatever reason. Private ambulance company, I can assure you, would not have a similar view of their clients. And so, from an islander perspective, this is, anyone who is unfortunate enough to have to utilize this service is going to end up saving money. And I, at the same time, we're able to do that and better utilize city assets. So this has always been a win-win for the city, for islanders, and I personally think it gives us a higher standard of service than we'd otherwise be able to get because the transport vehicles are already on the island versus having to come from off the island every time we want to transport somebody. So this is, this is a win in many ways. So I am not embarrassed by this program at all and think it's a tremendous step forward for our people.
Right. So there's a fundamental reason why I'm against this. I agree that our citizens get better service from this. I'm somewhat perturbed that we need, that we had to initiate this program for our citizens to derive this better service from our firefighters that should have been providing it in the first place. Because that's what our property taxes pay for, is for public service, and that's the first cut, should be the first cut in public service, are things like fire service, and they should have been taking them to Overlake in the first place, under the, under the metrics that allow them or enable them to take them now. I don't know why we weren't doing it in the first place. And Councilmember Grous brings up a point about underutilization. I worry about that underutilization because, as the city manager tells us over and over and over, there's not a department, or never has been a department, that has been underutilized or has free time on their hands, or any additional service or program is, puts them over the top, and we need additional manpower to do that, to absorb them. So I worry what is not being done. And I appreciate Chief Tubbs' management down there, that things are getting done, and his pronouncements that the crews down there have embraced this. But coming from an environment that is equipment-heavy, training-intensive, I recognize all the work that men or people in uniform are doing when they're not actually doing their job. So that they're prepared to be ready, to be trained, so their equipment is inventoried, so their equipment is clean, so their equipment is maintained. Just a ton of stuff goes on behind the scenes that we don't appreciate, and I worry that one year, two years down the road, that the additional quote-unquote "underutilization" or preutilization that we're now taking advantage of actually is cutting into things that they need to be doing. And for that reason, I'll not support this amendment, or this motion.
Before we go, Mike, you had two points. And your first point, quite honestly, I didn't quite follow it, but it came out in a way that I think you may not have intended, but without fully understanding, it sounded like you were, but it sounded like you were unhappy with what the fire department was doing. Could you just maybe try some different words on that one? Because I suspect the point may have come out differently than you intended.
Okay, and I apologize for that, and thank you for pointing out, Mr. Mayor. I fully, I'm fully confident that our citizens are getting, get better service when our firemen transport them versus AMR. Fully expect that. My question is, well, why weren't they doing that in the first place? Why weren't they, why weren't they transporting our citizens as often as they could under the metrics, or maybe under the metrics that we're using now? Why weren't they doing that in the first place? Well, the reason was, and my thought is, the reason was is because by offloading to AMR, they, it freed them to do other critical mission essential tasks, which we might not appreciate fully on this dais. If they had that, if they had that capacity, they should have been doing it in the first place without this program.
Thank you. Okay, other discussion points? Mike?
Just briefly, and I won't rehash your other discussions, but I have been fundamentally against this for a couple of reasons, mainly because we've already paid for this through levies and taxes. And I have a fundamental issue with privatizing essential public services like fire. Also, the other issue I've got is, we agreed about a year, well, not quite a year ago, we agreed to a one-year experiment. So being of the scientific ilk, I think, I thought, okay, let's look at all the data, let's come to March and lay it all in front of us, and if in fact, this is something that's working for the citizens, then, you know, I'll buy into it. And I think we're jumping to wanting to generate more revenue because it's not generating as much as we had hoped, so we're going to try to extend it into December, and we're going to add on the mileage and some other fees. I understand all of that. But I guess, in terms of being upfront, you know, not only with me, but with the public, I have a fundamental problem of kind of changing the rules as we go. I do look forward to the annual report and looking at all the metrics to determining how this program is operated, and I appreciate all the work that Chief Tubbs has put into that. But again, I have some fundamental disagreements that, you know, stem back from the origination of this program. And I guess we need to hearken back to the, to the reason why we created this, and it wasn't to make the fire department better because we all thought the fire department was just doing a fantastic job. It was to generate revenue for the general fund. So, again, my fundamental disagreement is using a public essential service that's already been paid for by the taxpayers to generate revenue. I think we have other ways that we can do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on motion to adopt ordinance number 12C-01 authorizing collection of basic fire, basic life support transport fees through December 31, 2012. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So passes on a vote of four to two.
Mayor, I would move to adopt resolution number 1449 authorizing the additional collection of mileage reimbursement expenses for each BLS transport.
Second?
Dan, you want to speak to it?
This is the subject of, that the chief already explained. It's basically just reworking our reimbursement formula to take full advantage of what we intended to take advantage of a year ago, and I think with the benefit of experience and a better understanding of how this really works, that this is just, it's really a housekeeping task more than anything else.
Anybody else? No? No? All right, I'm not convinced on this one, and so I'm looking for thoughts around, but I feel like we set out to do this experiment with the fee in the first place, and that this feels a little bit like piling on. And I recognize that it's back to the insurance company, and so the citizen isn't influenced by it, but I am not convinced that we ought not just carry forward for the course of 2012 with the fee itself and consider the mileage as something we deal with at the end of 2012.
But with all due respect, what, all you're doing is just saying that you're going to need to find $25,000 somewhere else in the budget. That's all this is. This is a question of, do we, do we add $25,000 to the general fund? Or do we cut $25,000 of expenses somewhere else? Or do we find another source for $25,000? And if this is, this is, there's nothing more sophisticated about this. It doesn't cost our citizens anything more. But it actually does cost our citizens more because if we don't do this, that means we either got to cut services by $25,000, or we got to add revenue somewhere else by $25,000. So in the cruelest way, I could put this to you and say, well, if we don't do this, then we should have to raise taxes by another quarter of a percent, because that's what it translates into. So basically, if you vote against this motion, you're voting to increase taxes by a quarter of 1%. I mean, that's a very simplistic way of looking at it, but that's effectively what the economic result is to our citizens by not passing this, unless you're prepared to cut services by the equivalent of a quarter of a percent of property tax.
I tend to agree with Dan there. It's, it's a user fee that we should have included when we voted on the first, on the first motion about the whole idea of transport fees. So I'm going to vote in favor of it.
No, I don't, Councilmember Grous, I don't think it's a cut in $25,000 worth of services. Again, these are additional funds that our property taxes or our general fund, these are additional funds going into our general fund that, above and beyond. This is an additional $25,000 for new services that we haven't thought of yet.
You forget, Mike, that we are running a deficit in 2012, last time I looked. So.
Well, recall, it's not, we're, our revenues are increasing already. The reason why we're running a deficit isn't so much, isn't on the revenue side. We're all, we're, we have more revenue now, this third quarter, than we did last third quarter by 2%. The issue isn't the revenue. It's not a revenue problem. It's an expense problem.
No, 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 that's not fair. I mean, the issue, we passed a budget which assumes having to go into reserves in 2012. The only reason you go into reserves is if you're running a deficit. So we have a deficit right now, so if you don't want to look upon it as, as cutting services, you don't want to look upon it as adding taxes, then look upon it as dipping more into your reserves to cover the deficit, the extra $25,000 deficit that will result from this. And that's what, you know, money is, it's $25,000, and it's either going to come from revenues, it's going to get cut out of expenses, or it's going to come out of reserves. There aren't a lot of options here.
I mean, there's a quarter of a million dollars sitting in the beautification fund.
Right.
There's many other things that we could do before we jump to raising taxes.
All right. Mike Grady?
This opens up a whole can of worms, Dan. You know, I mean, we went through a reconsiderate, you know, I made a reconsideration of the Sura Lakeland savings to address many of those issues, and was voted down. So I think before we decide to add on another fee, that that be incorporated into the overall budget discussion that we're going to have, start, and start to tee that up at our planning session. But I don't feel like it's appropriate to piecemeal these fees throughout the year and not have it within a broader context of the overall budget. And I really don't think that it's fair to characterize it as, well, if you do, if you don't do this, and you're voting for a quarter percent property tax increase. I mean, that's just not fair.
Debbie?
At this point, I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I think, first of all, from what I understand, there's no fundamental change in the basic principles that guided the decision to begin with. There's no additional fees that will hit the residents of Mercer Island, that this is income, essentially. The second point that I understand is that there's a current shortfall in terms of what we've been able to collect, you know, today, based on the original budgeting principles and processes, which means if there is a shortfall, in fact, that shortfall in what we're collecting here will have to be recovered elsewhere, through the general fund, through, I think, as Dan called, income generation or the rainy day fund. And I do respect the point, I think, that Councilmember Grady makes, in that it is a slight methodological change midstream, but again, because it doesn't break the basic principles and the, I think, the guiding thoughts behind the original proposal, I'm okay with it. So, so based on those basic fundamentals, I'm supporting this.
Put myself firmly on the fence on that one, didn't I? All right. All right. At this point, I, I don't know. I, I guess, let me come back to Chief Tubbs for a minute. I just want to ask the question of the test period that we established initially, just help me to understand the timeline that we set up for this whole thing and where we are within that timeline, if you would.
Was one year ending March 17th of this year.
Yeah, so we're essentially at the one-year mark shortly.
Couple months, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And were we to adopt this, when would this go into effect, then?
Which one, the resolution or the actual ordinance?
The collection of mileage fees.
The collection of mileage fees could go in immediately. The ordinance itself would take the 30 days.
No, I just, I'm just trying to understand where we are in our evaluation cycle on all of this. So, okay, given that, thank you very much. Given that, I will, I will support this in, with the thought that it doesn't make sense for us to have another checkpoint at December 31 of 2012, which is what I was thinking, which becomes sort of an arbitrary point in time for us to do another review. So unless, and there are other comments, we'll bring it back for a vote. All right. All those in favor of the motion to adopt resolution number 1449 authorizing the additional collection of mileage reimbursement expenses for each BLS transport port, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Motion passes on a vote of four to two. Thank you. Chief Tubbs? And we move on now to Agenda Bill 4693, Parking on the Mercer Ways Implementation Plan. For that, Ann, are you, welcome in. And Liz, thanks for sticking with us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. Ann Nellhau, Assistant City Engineer, here to talk about Parking on the Mercer Ways, the Implementation Plan. And so I don't really have much of a presentation, but more for the audience. Just showing what the schedule for implementation is. There's someone out there still watching, because they've been waiting for this. So as presented in the Agenda Bill, this topic was discussed back in November, and your consensus was to implement a parking restriction on the Mercer Ways. No parking anytime dawn to dusk, with exception for snow and ice conditions and special events. So the schedule that I've put together for implementing that plan tonight, we're here talking about the Implementation Plan highlights, and then, again, as described in the Agenda Bill, we do need to update the parking, a parking, the parking ordinance, and the first reading of that ordinance will be on February 21st at your council meeting. And then a second reading is then planned for March 5th. If that ordinance is then approved, we will need to publish that approval in the Mercer Island Reporter, which would take place on March 14th, which is that Wednesday publication. And then the ordinance would go into effect 30 days later, April 13th. So while those pieces are going on, then staff would locate where a sign installation would occur, order the signs, get them installed, and bag them. So that, and so that's occurring between, sometime between February and April 12th, before that ordinance goes into effect. And then on April 16th, which I think is a Monday, we would then uncover those signs. Enforcement would then begin on May 1st, so we would recognize about a two-week grace period for people to become acco- So, we would recognize about a two-week grace period for people to become accustomed to the signs and what that means, and then enforcement could begin. As described in the Agenda Bill, our plan for communication is to, beginning this week, to get word out to the residents who live directly adjacent to the Mercer Ways that this restriction was consensed on by the council in November, that this is the plan for implementation. The next milestone will be the first reading of the ordinance. The method for getting that information out is direct mailing to all of those residents who have direct access to the Mercer Ways, using MI Weekly, using our website, hopefully getting something published in the Mercer Island Reporter. And we progress from there. So, that's my presentation.
We know what the county had decided about this.
And you're sticking with it.
And I'm sticking with it, exactly.
When Anne put this together, I coached her that this is about implementation, the policy decision has been made, and so, you're gonna just brief the council on the steps you're gonna go through to do this, and you're not gonna ask a lot, ask the council a lot of questions. And so, you may notice here in this Agenda Bill, there aren't questions to be asked. Now, I know you have them, and so, we will go through a Q and A period, but it is our belief that you have made the policy decision, and this is just about how we're gonna go about putting it in place.
Okay, so with that tee up, Mike, you got your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I look at this as a big policy requirement that will actually take a lot of time, especially that March 5th meeting. And I already see March 5th as a lot of business being conducted there, so, Mr. City Manager, I'm sure you'll look into that. The, I'd like to talk about the communication plan. At the last meeting, I brought up about, about the contractors, what we were gonna do with the contractors. I wasn't really satisfied with the answer. Actually, I don't think there was an answer. I would feel comfortable, and I think for a full vetting, which is important through this public process, I'd like to see you include the contractors that are licensed here on the island as part of that notification. I think that would give, would get some input from them, it would give good perspective, different perspective, and, 'cause I see those contractors speaking not only for themselves, but also for the households out there that are thinking about building on the Mercers, or who will eventually build on the Mercers. And there's, I think there's a potential of, if not handled, if handled one particular way, to where it could really add to the cost of a single-family home and even make Mercer Island even less affordable than it is. So, if there's agreement with the council, you know, I would like to see the communication to include either all the contractors or a subset that you deem would be appropriate, i.e. just the GCs, if the council would see that.
Yeah, so, the little buzz going on here, just so you know, is that we've had, I've just had a text from somebody saying, "We're no longer on the air." And so, for those who...
So, say anything you want. Ally's gone down to the control room right now to talk to the technician.
And given the, given the black eye we gave ourselves last time, we'd like to, we'd like to make sure we stay on the air. So, my apologies for that kind of interrupting. Mike, your question, and Rich, Ann, how would you like to handle suggestions coming from council members?
We had this discussion once before, that there's a process already in place for parking for contractors when they get their permit. It's all set up, it's part of our existing process for providing how they're going to address parking. And it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily foreclose, you know, under the right circumstances, putting parking in some part of the Mercers, if that's the only alternative, I would assume. But there is a process in place for controlling that. And that's fine, Mike. I mean, I think it's perfectly appropriate to notify anyone and everyone that will be impacted by this policy. I don't object to that in any way, shape, or manner, but I, but I don't think that you're facing the kind of draconian consequences that you're projecting, because my guess is that anyone who gets a permit now to do construction in the Mercers is probably, isn't part of their permit, that they can go put all their trucks out on the Mercer.
We actually spent some time today, 'cause I knew this was an issue that Mike wanted to talk about. We spent some time with a building official and a city engineer to really talk about that process. So, quickly, it is part of the building permit application process. So, for us to issue that building permit on a construction site, they typically routinely establish a parking plan as part of the permit for the contractor and for their subs and their suppliers. And how this will work is if there's a construction site along the Mercers, or even if it's one of those side streets off the Mercers, first thing they're gonna try to do is get the contractors and their suppliers to park on the site itself. And if it's a side street, they'll try and work it so, if they're in the right-of-way, they're in the right-of-way in front of the property. If that can't work, or that's not enough, then the property owner needs to get permission from adjacent property owners to be in the right-of-way in front of their properties. And only if there's no other solution, carpooling, we've done that before, too, where there's a remote site and they have to carpool into the construction site. If no other option is available on the Mercers, then as, as part of the building permit, it'll probably actually come as part of what we call a street use permit, the applicant may have figured a street use permit, and they, the contractor or supplier will be allowed to park on the Mercers for the specified period of time. And I think we'll probably end up doing something like a city-issued removable pass, it'll be, sit on a dashboard for only the period of time that the permit allows it for them to do that work.
Well, I think that's fine. But I don't, I think that's fine, okay? And that's the flexibility that I'm looking for. But I don't see that in this ordinance. So, I mean, we're a land of rules, a land of law.
We have the authority to do that now, so...
How do you, if we pass this ordinance...
There's no ordinance.
What's that?
There's no ordinance. We're not passing an ordinance.
What are we doing?
We're giving staff guidance.
Yeah, the ordinance comes in February.
But I'll just point out, that wouldn't be in the ordinance, because that's a function of the permit process. The ordinance will just identify the parts where they can't be parked at, and then the permit process itself deals with it on an individual basis, just as the city manager has described.
And the authority to do all these things is already vested in existing building permit ordinances.
Correct.
What I described for you was...
We're eventually gonna pass this ordinance. I mean, whether it's now, we're eventually gonna pass this ordinance. So, if we take that, and it might be the will of the council, to take that flexibility away from the permit process, or, you know, to take that flexibility to park, for contractors to park on the Mercers, unless we specify that exception in the ordinance, no?
Well, if you passed an ordinance that took the building officials' authority to manage parking at construction sites, I think he'd be concerned.
Well, we have to address it, you have to address in the, in the ordinance. I agree with you. That's one of the things that we have to address in the ordinance, is construction parking. We can't just say that we have a process in DSG through the permit process to...
Actually, we could do that.
And Councilmember Zero, yes, we can do that, because it's how we list it out now. So, we just, in the ordinance itself, we just identify, you can't park in this, in this particular area, but because there's exceptions already permitted, already authorized, we can make those exceptions. But it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, and we, we would be unable to put that into an ordinance, actually, because you're not gonna know if each individual case will fit within the exception. So, it's much...
Well, if, see, what I don't understand, though, is, is we're restricting parking on the Mercers, and all that's, that's a good thing, because it's going to improve pedestrian safety and bike safety. But we do have this issue with construction parking, and what does construction parking look like? Construction parking looks like eight pickup trucks parked bumper-to-bumper. I mean, that's just the nature of construction parking. So, they don't need special dispensation if they can park where this ordinance allows them to. What I'm concerned about is, are those areas that previously to this ordinance, they would be able to park, but now because of it, there's a shoulder there, and they're, or now because of this ordinance, they're not able to park there. They're not able to find parking on the Mercers, because we've restricted it through this ordinance.
So, the, the decision by council was to implement a policy that between dusk and dawn, there'll be no parking, I meant the other way, dawn and dusk, sorry, I get mixed up with that movie, that there'll be no parking on the east and west Mercers. We're not gonna put any exceptions in there. The exception will be when they come to the DSG counter to get a permit, and they'll identify that we have this need for parking, just as you discussed, that there'll be all these trucks or such. And then, that will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, as it's already being done now, to determine what's the parking plan.
Another way, don't we have to put that in the ordinance?
Let me give you another analogy, and maybe this might, might help you a little bit. We have no parking signs in the town center. A lot of them in different places, different configurations, different times, where you can park different places. We also have a very big construction site going on in the town center right now, with lots of contractors and suppliers. And as part of that construction site, they have a permit, and in that permit is a parking plan for workers and suppliers, and they've been living by that. And you don't see those construction workers out illegally parking around the town center. We do that under existing authority now, within the building code. It's no different than if we start putting up signs along east and west Mercer Way. It's the same setup. We have the authority to manage those construction sites under our building code.
See, I don't quite understand that. There may be a council member on this council who says, "The heck with the construction parking. I don't want..." Or there might be citizens out there, "I don't want cars parked on the shoulder. I don't want cars parked where this ordinance says they're not gonna be parked." But you're saying, and you're saying that in spite of that, if, well, we can, the permit pro, the permit process can override what this ordinance does or does not say?
Now, I guess I get your point. If in February 21st, a majority of the council looks like they're moving towards, "We don't care what the consequences are, we, we don't, we're never gonna let a construction vehicle park on east or west Mercer Way," I think you'll find the city staff would very much advise against that.
And I think that, if I could, the, the point you're raising is one that is appropriately addressed on February 21st, with the council all weighing in at that time on whether that is the will of the council. And what you've heard is, what I've heard at least, is the staff says, "Don't go there." So, I, I feel like we're okay on that one, if you're willing to hold until the 21st of February and have a discussion then.
Well, yes, absolutely. And that's why, that's, that's why my request for the communication be to include the contractors, so we, one, it's fully vetted with them, an interested party that also represents households on the island, future households on the island who will build along Mercer Way. And, two, gives us, the council, with their three-minute discussions and emails, et cetera, perspective that maybe we hadn't considered, or we didn't know about. So, that, you know, it's a roundabout way in a long time, and I apologize for that, but that's the reason for asking that we include contractors in the communication.
When does the communication occur? Is this a decision that needs to be made now?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the Agenda. I, you know, I'm not sure that I'm asking for a decision on the communication plan, but that being said, this week was sort of the kickoff prep, a notice that would go out to the respective community that would say, "This is the restriction as the council approved. These are the milestones that you will be seeing coming up. The long term is, you know, restrictions would go into effect on May 1st. Here's the message." And then, it would be ongoing from that point forward.
Question?
All right.
Ann?
You know, Jane, hold on, Mike's been in the queue for a while.
Go ahead, go ahead. It'll still be there.
Question about notification. I understand letters are going to residents along the Mercer, the Mercers, but are they going to just residents who live on the Mercers? Because there are hundreds of people who are gonna be affected, who live on roads that, you know, tiny little roads that come up to a Mercer.
Any, anyone who has access to the Mercer Way. So, any of those longer roads that have, you know, five, 10, however many homes that that access the Mercer Way from that smaller road, all of those people will be included in that notification.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ann, the question's on the implementation. Per a previous public appearance, can you describe to me the total number of signs we're looking at? Do you have a ballpark figure for how many signs we're gonna need to pull this up?
Tonight, no. The number that's in the Agenda Bill, sort of on a 200 to 500-foot spacing, was a best estimate of what I thought would be applicable. You know, I recognize council's concerns about sign blight. So, in all honesty, my preference is we, we staff locate the signs. So, we're, we're driving through, and we're loc, and we're looking at sections, and we're identifying where signs should be appropriately placed, that will not only get the message to drivers looking for a place to park, but will also be enforceable by the police department. So, in all honesty, spacing might end up being every 750 to 1,000 feet. We might, you know, on an inside curve, we might have one sign, not three or four signs, that we might see if we were really were spacing based on a 200 to 500-foot spacing.
And specifically with the sign now, is there any thought to putting an asterisk with some small print on the bottom that would speak to the exceptions for inclement weather and that kind of thing?
My personal preference, and I think what I've seen, you know, region-wide, is that message really doesn't need to be part of the sign. The message does need to get out, and I think a better mechanism for doing that is our website, the communication plan that we have with all of the property owners on the Mercer Way, you know, possibly is a, an annual reminder to the people who live on the Mercer Ways that, you know, during snow and ice conditions, this is what you can do.
Yeah. And I'm not looking for something, you know, paragraph, but maybe just like a one-liner, like, "See, you know, the website or whatever for exceptions for inclement weather," or something really simple so that, and you wouldn't even need to put it on every sign, you could maybe put it, you know, at the beginning and at the end of the block of no parking.
You'd actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, you'd actually probably have to put it on every sign. Because otherwise, then it would just indicate that area.
Okay, all right. So, just a suggestion or a question, keep it simple, but people will have questions about the exceptions. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jane? If there's other questions, but I have another question.
All right.
And perhaps Chief Holmes knows, what would the fee, the fine be for someone who parks illegally according to this new ordinance? Would be a regular parking, parking ticket, okay? And I appreciate Liz is doing the math, a sign every five seconds. I did math in a different way, and if we, given that Ann said perhaps signs wouldn't be as frequent as the average, but 13.2 miles around the island, 69,696 feet, it would be, could be 200 signs. 200 signs and about $20,000 of expenditure just for signs. I am against this ordinance, I have been from the beginning, just wanna point that out.
Debbie?
At this point, again, thank you for doing the math, because it was, it was very enlightening. So, at this point... So, at this point, I'm as interested in how, how it's implemented, as what exactly is being implemented. A sign blight around the Mercer Ways would be shocking.
All right, Dan, I'm betting you've got a comment to make at this point.
Of course. Are we still doing questions?
Well, since we don't have a motion that we're making, I'm leaving this a little bit free-flowing the conversation.
I could have another question if you wanted a discussion. Are you going to discussion?
I have one question, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's actually for, for Chief Holmes. On the agenda bill, it talks about that the enforcement would be done by the public safety officer, the parking person who does all the parking and the leash laws and the, yeah, prisoner transport. I just want to confirm that if, if a police officer, a regular police officer was driving around on the mercers and saw somebody illegally parked, they would also enforce this ordinance, presumably?
Yes, for the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief again. Yes, they would certainly have the ability to do that, and in fact, they do do that very thing. They will proactively write parking tickets. While it's the primary duty of the police support officer, the regular patrol officers also write parking tickets as well.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anne, I have a question about the communication plan. Since there will be exceptions in this communication plan, which I thought at the last meeting we addressed, will your communication plan talk about those exceptions? So, will articulate what those exceptions are that we agreed upon?
As best as I can recall, we're looking at no parking anytime dawn to dusk, where we have improved paved roadside shoulders. We would describe the exceptions for snow and ice conditions, that we wouldn't be enforcing for that. We would describe the exceptions for special events, and, depending on where we get, what that process might look like, it might be a follow-up communication to some very specific larger groups that do special events versus, you know, with a plan versus smaller homeowners that have periodic special events where they need parking. So, we have special events we have.
Did we not agree the inside lane? We're only talking about the inside lane?
Only where the improved shoulders are.
Only where the improved shoulders are. And I believe that's-
There are shoulders, few, but there are shoulders on the outside lane also.
No, but we're only talking about the inside.
But nevertheless, we're just talking about the inside. Okay, just something to specify, just something to put in the communication plan. And then, I think you alluded to this, but we're, parking is allowed in the gravel, especially on, for instance, on turn, okay?
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'm ready for this. I'm going to, I guess, ask now for comment rather than questions, and we're going to let this evolve a little bit and try and figure out how we're coming to the point where we've got some direction back to Anne. But let's go with comment and see where we land.
There's part of this implementation plan that we're just not connecting, and, you know, there's a sense of the council, wait a minute, that's not what we had in mind, let us know that. So, comments are fine, we can adjust, this is a check-in on what our implementation plan is, and let us know if we're going in the right direction.
Mike?
Well, it gets back to my other question, and I think it'd be helpful to have kind of a ballpark of cost and number of signs, and a more detailed understanding of roughly where those signs would be, because I think we all share the same interest in the environment, both physical and aesthetic. And to what extent we can minimize the number of signs, that's a good thing, and that would certainly minimize the cost. So, I think having a better understanding of that as part of the implementation plan would be helpful.
Other comments? Dan?
So, just, you know, I know, Anne, that you're not a big fan of this proposal, so I, but I think it is, I think it's really important on the communication of this thing, and I'm sure you will, that you will, you will do this in a way that reflects the position of the council. But in doing that, I think it's very critical that the reasoning of the council be very clearly communicated to the people on the mercers, and that is the whole history of the improved shoulders, why they were put in, why explicitly they were put in, and why they were never put in for parking. The safety hazard that now exists, the Liz, I don't mean, I don't know you, but everyone else calls you by your first name, who was, who made-
I'll be the same for you.
Thank you. Who made the public comment, you know, the question is, "What's the problem?" And it, this is really an issue that has been brewing on the council for several years now, and we've managed to avoid it, but, I mean, this, we started putting in these shoulders almost 10 years ago. And the whole purpose of these shoulders was to enhance not only safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, but also to enhance safety for motorists, so that the pedestrians and bicyclists can get off the road and motorists can pass them, which is not the situation or wasn't the situation before on a good chunk of the mercers. And so, this was intended to meet vehicular safety as well as pedestrian safety and bicycle The problem, very simply, is that if anyone parks on one of these shoulders, it defeats all three of those objectives very quickly. And all of a sudden, you've got someone who has to go into the roadway, and depending on where someone parked, they may need to go into the roadway on a very quick basis, because all of a sudden, they're surprised by a parked car. And we also have the very real risk that if someone's driving, biking by a car, or walking by a car, and the door opens up all of a sudden, that they can be very dead very quick, more if they're bicycling by. And they generally have no idea that a door's going to open up suddenly. So, that was, that was the problem that the council was trying to address, because the reality is, is that particularly in the summer months, but whenever bicycling is possible, whenever people are jogging, you have a potential safety problem. And it only takes one fatality for, and God knows, there've been enough accidents on the mercers, but it takes one really serious one, one fatality to really change the equation here. But that's the problem that we were trying to address by this. And I think, it's a long way of saying, Anne, that we need to make sure that this letter that we're sending out is written not only for informative purposes, but written to explain the reasoning of the council in going forward with this thing. And also to make it very clear, the exceptions about inclement weather, which should be part of the ordinance. There should be, it should be very explicit in the ordinance that, that the city manager has the authority to waive enforcement whenever he or she determines that the weather conditions dictate doing such. There should be, and that should be very, because I used to live down in East Mercer, and so I know very well that, how important it is for people when it's, like, on a night like tonight, I can assure you that East Mercer is littered with cars, as it should be. And that, that's something that, there should be no question in anyone's mind that they can park next to a sign on a night like tonight. And we need to make that very clear. And I fully agree with what others have said about sign blight. You know, the less is best. I think in terms of whether you can do red signs or green signs or any other color signs, we're probably stuck with the Uniform Act on signage, which says that only certain types of signs are permitted in the state of Washington. So, we're not, we don't have as much leeway as you might think we have in terms of the color of signs, or the wording on the signs, or even the size of the signs. So, there are some significant restrictions there. But the bottom line is, you know, we, this is a, this is something that, if, we, again, we all went into this, those have been involved in the council, when these projects have come in, come up over the years, we all went into these projects knowing full well that we're going to reach this day where we have to, we have to bite the bullet, because these shoulders were made for a specific purpose. And if we permit people to park on them, we defeat that purpose. And it's not, people on the mercers need to understand, this is not there to punish them, this is there to address their vehicular safety, their pedestrian safety, their bicycle safety, in the same way it addresses the safety of everyone else on the island. And probably even more so in terms of vehicular safety. Because there's nothing worse than having to try to pass a cyclist or pass a jogger, and you have to go out into the lane, and suddenly you're out there and you're staring at another car. Nothing worse than that. And while I think maybe adults understand that you don't pass on curves, there's a heck of a lot of younger drivers who maybe don't yet understand the full, that they're not invincible and that there could be a car coming around the curve. And it happens, and we all know it happens.
Okay. Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to try something here, and this is unrehearsed, so Anne, stop me if I say something that you just can't do, but within the council, there certainly is some anxiety about signs, sign blight, too many signs. We've got the time period between February and April to sort of work that out. What if we got a good can of spray paint and went out and marked generally where we think signs should go? Enough so that you all could drive the mercers and see how many marks are out on the pavement, and at least it gives you some kind of a read, is this going to really freak you out or not? And paint's cheap, and you're going to have to do it anyway.
Right, exactly.
And if it just, if you drive around and you think this is too many, then we can step back and adjust somehow, but at least it starts to give you something more than just doing the math. Because the math helps, but it, it's not really the context of what's out on the ground. Does that sound like something we could do?
I see nodding heads.
It's absolutely doable, yeah.
I want to weigh in with just a little bit of comment here, too. I certainly agree with Dan's comments about the, you know, the tremendous expense we're going to, to create these shoulders and the desire that we make sure they don't become convenient parking for folks, which really wasn't the intent. I did notice, I was out for a run this evening, and I went from about, on East Mercer, from the 6,800 block to the 5,300 block. And one of the things I noticed was tons of cars out parked on the side of the road because of the weather expectation tonight. But interestingly, it looked like, completely rough guess, eight out of 10 made a point of parking off the road and didn't use the shoulder. And so, even without us giving any direction, I have a sense that a lot of folks get that idea already, and they're, and they're already thinking to themselves, you know, "Better if I have my car outside that lane that we're trying to use for pedestrian and bike traffic." So, it leads me into the point I wanted to make, which is, I want to see how we can step into this more gently than, rather than more forcefully. I don't, I think the majority of folks get it and are with us on it, and what we're trying to do is, is ooch the community along in the right direction here, without it appearing that this is the iron fist of Mercer Island law coming after anybody. So, I like this idea that Rich has proposed, and your suggesting could be done, of let's have a look at some signs and see how it works. To your point, I think, thank you for doing the math. I hadn't thought about it in quite that way before, and it makes the point well. So, yeah, let's, let's have a little bit more of a look at it and try and figure out how we get there in a way that doesn't cause the blight, doesn't make the citizens feel like we're strong-arming them, but does achieve the end that I think we all recognize we'd like to achieve, which is trying to keep those paths clear as much as possible. So, that's my comment. So, I've heard nods on the paint. I understand we have the issue of, as we come to the ordinance, the conversation's going to have to be had about contractors and their usage of the roadway. Mike has raised the question of alerting contractors about this, and so, those are kind of the three things that I think have been teed up one way or another. It seems like maybe, look, the paint, is there any objection to the concept of the paint? Because I think I saw nods pretty much all around with that. Are we okay with that? Okay. Okay, so, paint, let's do it.
Okay.
As long as it's fire-degree. Converse six.
I have a question on that. Could you do it by the weekend of our planning session? So that there would be the possibility for us to, during lunchtime or whatever, do a quick-
That'd be fast.
I don't know, because I'm not sure when that is.
Weekend after this.
No.
How about before the 21st of February?
Uh, maybe.
Let's see what we can do there.
Okay.
As someone mentioned, there's what, six miles of signs to place?
Well, 13.1, but 6,000, if you're talking feet, I've got that, too.
And, you know, there's nothing else left to do.
All right.
We'll do our best. We'll do our best.
Oh, that's true. That's all the way around Mercer Island. We don't have the north end, I mean, I included the north end, which-
All right.
How about this? If I can't get it all done, we'll at least get started on it, and I'll let you know where, so you can get a sense of how we're approaching.
That sounds like a fine idea. Yeah, thank you. Anybody have desire to tee up a conversation about whether contractors are restricted or not in advance of the ordinance discussion on February 21st? Which, Mike, I think, so, are we, are we comfortable with letting that conversation happen? Okay. I'm hearing, I'm seeing enough nods to think we're there. Should contractors be alerted at the time that these notices go out? That's, I think, the other question that's been raised here. So, Mike, you say yes, others have opinions about?
I guess I'm-
Let me just ask a practical question first. Can it be done? What would that entail?
Development Services has a list of builders that they commonly work with. We'll never get all of them, but there are, you know, 20 that do 80% of the work, so I'm making that up. We can get most of them.
We can, we can get it most of them that way. I know everyone who works on the island has to have a city business license, and I'm assuming we have a database that would be very easy to just generate the mailing labels and send them the same information, so.
Okay.
It can be accomplished.
Okay, so, it can be done, should we ask staff to do it? I know there's one yes vote here. Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
Actually, I would rather you not weigh in. I think we'll do it anyway. That's just good customer service. We often send things out to our builders just to alert them of changes that are going on in the field, and we think of them as being customers.
Okay. Okay, very good. Unless there's anything else, I think I've covered the main points that were brought up. So, thank you very much, Anne.
Thank you.
Brought us something you didn't want to deal with, and you did it with aplomb, so thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to other business. Councilmember absences upcoming. Anybody?
I will be absent the first meeting of June, whatever that is.
Okay. And I will be absent the first meeting of April. So, you are the big cheese, first meeting of April.
Oh, of course, it's my name.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, very good. Let's go to the planning schedule, then. So, we get really busy here soon.
Well, the next two weeks, we're all going to get to know each other really well. February 6th, and, both February meetings and the March meeting, we've got a lot of work to do, and none of these, as you know, reflect any of your planning session agenda items, because we haven't done the work plan, so.
Are we going to have a study session on the 6th?
Uh, there's nothing there now, so, right now, I would assume not. And after having met about five straight days, I'm not sure I want February 6th to be any longer than what we've got right there. I emailed the draft to you today.
But late today.
Late.
And that was as much my fault as anything, so, I was hoping to have at least initial feedback tonight, but if you didn't get it, let's, let's deal with that as you get a chance to look at it, and we'll sort changes to it when, when I've got all the feedback.
Are the exact times on the planning schedule for the retreat?
Yes. It's, it's listed out. It's listed out as we would expect it to happen, so.
Okay, so I haven't heard any suggested changes to the calendar as it now stands, so let's assume that's-
Question I had is that you've got March 5th, that's when, Mr. City Manager, is that pretty full, March 5th, and then you're going to put in the, what, the second reading?
That's the second reading, so first reading's the action.
Yeah, a second reading should go pretty quickly.
First reading's when we have all the input, the public input, and then we make, give direction to staff, and they just come back to-
When's the first reading? Okay, that's fine. But that's, you know, you're right to point out, we need to hold that first reading on the 21st, which it doesn't show, the Mercer Way Ordinance, we have to consider that meeting right there full. And I might even put that commute trip reduction interlocal on consent, because it's a real, very straightforward deal. And we, Arts Council's saying, I'll, we'll manage that, so the 21st is really about the Mercer Ways, because I think you're right, Mike, if we're going to get people, it'll be for that.
Okay, that completes planning schedule, I think, for right now. Board appointments, so we have board appointment recommendations for three of our boards. They should be in everybody's packets, are they not?
Oh, this is-
Mr. Mayor, while you're passing that out, can we go back to the planning schedule?
Sure.
Just for a minute.
Yeah, of course.
Rich, one thing that I talked to James about before he left was the need for an ordinance to charge a fee at the electric vehicle charging station, so I think the term of the grant is the electricity will be free for the first two years, and then after that, we need to charge a fee. So we might want to put that somewhere in the other items to be scheduled list.
And he did mention that, too, and he is coming back for another week, so I can have a chance to talk to him.
And we've got examples from other jurisdictions that we can just cut and paste from.
Should be very straightforward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ann. Please, this has, yeah. Okay, so coming back to board appointments, staff has been diligently collecting applications for Arts Council, Senior Advisory Board, and Open Space Conservancy Trust. They have made recommendations after reviewing the applications, they've made recommendations to me, and I've reviewed those recommendations, and I think almost entirely accepted their recommendations, and now those recommendations come to you for approval, if you are so willing. So what's our, is this a motion and vote approach?
Yes, yeah, I would suggest doing a motion for each one of those, that way it's in-
For each organization, so it wouldn't be for each candidate, it would be for each-
Correct, each board.
Okay, so I'm hoping we have a motion for one of-
I would like to move that Ron Hulse be appointed to position number six in the Arts Council, and that Ann Tootle be appointed to position number eight in the Arts Council, and Susan Saphier be appointed to position number 10 on the Arts Council, and this will fill out the full slate of the Arts Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation, discussion? No? Okay, so all those in favor of these three appointees as named, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Very good, the Arts Council has its appointees.
When you, to save you guys the chore of getting through the Senior Advisory Board, when you get there, you can just simply say-
As recommended.
The mayor's appoint, recommended appointments.
We'll put them in a minute.
Anyone?
I'd move confirmation of the appointments to the Open Space Conservancy Trust for the mayor's recommendations.
Second?
In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, that passes as well, and that leaves us with the Senior Advisory Board, and do you have a motion for that?
I move that we approve the nine candidates for Senior Advisory Board.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, those are accepted as well, congratulations to those citizens, thank you for applying and becoming involved in these different important facets of our community. Let's see, what's next? Councilmember reports. Jane, you want to start?
Yes, the Arts Council meeting of January 11th, the council will be very pleased to know that we've appointed three new members to their board, this will fill them out, get them going, they have a lot of work to do, they were a little bit behind because they didn't have a quorum for the last two meetings, and they will be coming late to us for their work plan for 2013, and they will be coming before us for an amendment for their budget. So, anyway, things are going, things will be much better now that they'll have a full complement.
Thank you, David. You are L.
I don't believe you have had any board meetings, so you've been off the hook, and I suspect you will be by, I'll find out, but I think-
The Planning Commission and Design Commission are both canceled for all of January, so-
Right, and Utility Board? I think she had Utility Board.
Dan? Dan, nothing? Let's see, I'll say I attended the electric plug-in event, and I hope Michael spoke to it, he did a nice job of sort of, yeah, ribbon cutting and working with James on emceeing that, so it was a good event, and you can fill in the rest of the details there.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce, it was well organized by James, and I'm sorry that he is leaving, heading down the Ventura Highway, but we had a good turnout on a very cold day, but it's great to see these stations being energized, and we'll work on some of the details with signage and ordinance and that kind of thing, but one thing that's very positive is, and I'll make a plug for this, is King County Metro Pool has acquired 20 Nissan Leafs, so they're the first van carpool in the country that has electric vehicles associated with their program, so if there's anyone on this dais, and I'm actually doing this with some folks that commute from here to University of Washington, call up King County Metro, and you can get a Nissan Leaf, you need five people to sign up for the program, but you get the car, and for many of you that work in private or public sector, you may get transit subsidies that will cover most of the costs for the operation of the car, and it's a pilot project through Department of Energy, so as a part of that, you can use the car for as many miles as you want for personal use. So I'm making this plug, because I know there are many of us on the island that commute from here over to that part of University of Washington, or Seattle, or Bellevue, or whatever, and it's a free program, and we've got free charging stations that you can use to qualify for the program.
I'm just showing him a picture I took of a Nissan Leaf park at the City of Bellevue parking lot, plugged in.
Very good.
Stop next door.
So that's happening, I want to also make a plug for the Maintenance Department, they are doing a fantastic job of cleaning the streets, and for that, I'm extremely disappointed. And I will expect that you will put 68th Street on the bottom of your list to clear tomorrow, because-
They're going to put Avalon at the top.
That's fine, we'll make a trade, so hit Avalon first, hit 68th last, because the school board member that is my neighbor, his husband, and I already have our respective sleds out, he's got the old flexible flyer, and I have the old Russian double loose sled, and they're all greased and ready to go for tomorrow, so please don't clear that street first, thank you.
Mr. Zero?
So I have access to a Seattle U finance presentation by one of the professors there, I've extended an invitation to you all, city manager and the finance director, low profile, I really don't know what to expect, but you'll see that in your inbox and RSVP accordingly if you're available and interested.
Okay, thank you, and let's see, we are at the end of the regular business, is there anything else for the good of the order, or?
Mayor Bassett?
Yes.
I just want to let you know that the Merceron School District did cancel classes for tomorrow, so all schools are closed.
Ah, okay, so we-
At 8:15.
No classes tomorrow, my son, if he was watching, which he is not-
They are not going to be open till-
Would be jumping up and down.
School is out.
Closed by 5 o'clock.
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, no school tomorrow. Finally, I guess the last note I would make is, applications for the empty seat down there are due tomorrow afternoon, so if you-
By email.
Yeah, by email, if you are so inclined to stay indoors on the snowy day and type out an application.
Well, that's right, and to be fair to Ally, I think Ally's probably going to have to do this all remotely from home, she's going home tonight, and getting over here tomorrow may be a real challenge, so we're going to do our best to get emails out to you with any applications that do come in, we need to get a packet out to you guys in anticipation of next Monday, we've got some work ahead of us, and it's going to be a little bit tricky getting it done by Friday, but-
How many applications do we have?
We have three in hand.
Three applications so far.
Yeah, and so bear with us, the next 24, 36 hours, it always gets a little bit tough, we have so many staff that live out in the, so many of them live up there in the two feet of snow right now, up the hill, so, thanks.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.